To hear from you, New Yorkers, about the state's climate action plan. Draft scoping plan, that is. First, I want to thank the Buffalo Library for hosting us here today. Appreciate them opening their doors to us. And this is a great venue for what we need to accomplish tonight. I also want to just touch on briefly my thanks to fellow Climate Action Council members, some of whom are sitting here on the stage today, many of whom are out around the state currently. And frankly, the dozens of hundreds of staff and volunteers that have been a part of this process over the last two years. We've been hard at work at this. The draft scoping plan that is in front of you right now is the result of many, many thousands of hours of detailed work that has distilled expertise and science down into something that is, well, 350-plus pages, but is an ambitious document, to say the least. So tonight, you, this is really hearing from you. As I mentioned, we've gone now from our internal process to the public phase. So we are going to be hearing from you. And we would like to hear from you specifically about the draft scoping plan that's out there. So not about a law or a regulation that might be considered, but really about the draft scoping plan, so that we can hear from you. The second aspect is something of a housekeeping issue, which is that the public library, which has been gracious to open its doors, has a hard stop for us. So we need to, we need to close this down at 6:40 tonight. We're going to have our remarks short up front. Usually, we go through a longer PowerPoint, but in the interest of time, so we can begin hearing from you sooner, we're going to have everything abbreviated up front. And if you don't get in tonight, we hope you will, but if you don't, there are subsequent in-person and virtual hearings that you can take part in, and there's also a public comment period online that you can submit comments in writing. So with that, I'll allow my Climate Action Council co-chairs and rather co-members to introduce themselves.
Gavin Dutton, it's great to be in Buffalo. I'm based in Albany. I am the president of the Independent Power Producers of New York, and I am Senator Oort's appointment on the council.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Donna DiCarola. I'm president of National Fuel Gas Distribution Corporation, which is the local gas utility headquartered here in Western New York. And I'm pleased to be here this afternoon and to hear your comments. I'm an appointment from the Assembly.
Great. Good afternoon. Richard Ball, Commissioner of New York State Department of Agriculture and Markets.
Good afternoon. I'm Peter Iwanowitz, and I am a pointe from Assembly Speaker Carl Hasty.
And I'm Dennis Helsenbeck. Want to wish everyone a welcome here to Buffalo. I work for Verdi Pronte. We build battery systems at the old General Motors Chevrolet plant on East Delavan, east side of Buffalo, bringing innovation back here to Buffalo, to our home.
Great. Thank you. And Nora, if you are available to come up and talk about the meeting tonight while she's on her way up, I do want to thank our sign language interpreters. Last night, we did a, about almost a four-hour public hearing, and they didn't miss a beat the whole time. So in advance, I want to thank them. Okay, great. Nora, are you available? Or Sarah, am I turning to you first? Okay. Sarah Osgood, the head of our Climate Action Council.
My name is Sarah Osgood. I'm in, and I'm the executive director of the Climate Action Council. I typically have an overview deck that I go through, but in the interest of time tonight, as Basil said, I'm just going to touch on a couple slides. So if we could go to the next slide, please? Thank you. So the Climate Leadership and Community Protection Act, also referred to as the Climate Act, established very ambitious and necessary nation-leading greenhouse gas reduction requirements. It also established a Climate Action Council and tasked it with developing a scoping plan of how the state would meet its greenhouse gas reduction limits. It called for the draft to be issued by the end of 2021, followed by a public comment period, which we're currently in, prior to issuance of a finalized scoping plan at the end of this year. So as Basil mentioned, we're in the middle of this process. The purpose of this hearing and others are to hear feedback on the draft. The feedback that's received during this public comment period will be considered by the council as it works to finalize the scoping plan. And then, once the plan is finalized, we'll then move into the process of establishing regulations, which will also have comment periods associated with them, to ensure that the Climate Act goals are met. The scoping plan takes a holistic, economy-wide view of New York's greenhouse gas emissions and the process. The law outlined a process for reaching these strategies that included a number of advisory panels and working groups, ultimately comprising well over 100 experts, providing sector-specific recommendations to the council. The law also identified some key factors and impacts for the council to consider, including climate justice, job creation, health benefits, and a benefit cost analysis. The recommendations that were contained in the scoping plan also form the basis of scenario modeling that considers the interaction and the impacts of strategies across sectors. And with that, if I could just go to the next slide, please? Just want to remind folks that we are currently in this public comment period. It extends through June 10th of this year. This is the sixth of 10 hearings that we're holding across the state and virtually. You can see the other dates of the hearings on the screen here behind me. We also have a written comment form. You can, you can reach through our Climate Act website, climate.ny.gov. You can submit comments via email at scopingplan@nicerta.ny.gov. And of course, you can also use US Mail. And with that, I'll hand it over to Nora to go through the approach for tonight.
We have changed things around a little bit because we want to make sure that we can hear from everybody. We have a shortened timeframe, so we're going to be having, holding the hearing until, we've extended it from where we thought we would be at 6:30. We will be at 6:40, but we'll have to stop at that point. Couple of announcements before we get started. This hearing is being recorded. I have a couple of emergency announcements. In the event of an emergency, the exits are located at the entrance to the auditorium. The glass doors will bring you to Clinton Street. You want to go straight back that way. To my left, there's a set of double doors, double metal doors, that'll bring you to Ellicott Street. And from the lobby, to my right, there's a staircase, and that will bring you to Washington Street. So we want to be safe. The way this is going to work tonight, everyone who is a registered speaker received a card, and the card either says a group number. Hopefully, everybody who has an odd group number is on this side, and everybody who has an even group number is on this side. And we are going to call you up by groups. Your groups, the order in which you speak is the order in which you registered online, so it follows that order. Caroline, Sebastian? Caroline, you're doing odds, right? I had a plan. So you're going to have two minutes to speak. When you come up to the, to the facilitator, you're going to hand them your card. They'll announce your name and your affiliation, if you have one. You'll have two minutes to speak. I'm going to be pretty tight on time tonight because we want to get through all of the speakers, and we have about 100 people registered to speak. And we'll get through as many as we possibly can. For anyone who doesn't have a chance to speak tonight, you can submit your comments in writing, online. No comments spoken or written are looked at with any more weight. Everything is even. I'm going to ask you also to listen to each other tonight. You're going to hear things that make you happy, and you're going to hear things that make you angry. I'm going to ask you to be courteous to each other. Every opinion counts. Every voice counts. So let's try to be good neighbors. And just to remind anyone who may have come in with a poster, or a flyer, or a banner, you can't have those in the hearing room. There's an activist table out in the lobby, and you can leave your things out there. So without further ado, I think we'll get started. Could we have Group One is behind Caroline? And Group Two, Sebastian, raise your hand, is behind Sebastian. And just be aware that the facilitators are wearing gloves to protect everyone from, whatever, from COVID. And they will be holding the microphones, so please don't ask to take the microphone from them. They can't give it to you. Sebastian, let's start with you.
Luz Velez Push Silver.
Yes, hi, everyone. I'm first, want to say that I'm first-generation American of Puerto Rican descent and an indigenous person. And I looked at the scope of some of the planning, and I want to bring about, talking about the equity part of this plan. I've been sick since I was a child, only because I had to live where my parents could afford to live. And thereby, living near bomb freight trains, the type of energy that we used on Long Island was crude energy, crude petroleum. So I developed a lot of illnesses, at which time, I moved to Buffalo, where I thought things were going to be better. And it turns out that I ended up living near the Peace Bridge, where it caused me a lot of problems because of idling transportation. And it caused a lot of breathing problems. And I look at what's happening. I wanted to be able to afford my own place. I bought a place that kept me sick, at which time, because of that, it was always hot in the summer, it was like an oven, and cold regardless of what I did. So my concern is that, we look at the equity part of what goes on, and there should be a cost-saving measure to stop health inequities, keeping BIPOC communities sick. We know that we're not here to take away anybody's job, okay? We don't want to do that. We want it to be fair and equitable for all of us to be able to live and our communities to thrive. Your families are important, so is mine, and my life is just as valuable. Thank you.
Thank you. Caroline?
Jo Benedict, Executive Director, Western New York Association of Plumbing Mechanical Contractors.
Members of the Climate Action Council, thank you for being here today. In addition to the Western New York Association of Plumbing Mechanical Contractors, we represent a number of other construction trade associations, which together represent over 1,000 businesses and about 20,000 workers here in Western New York. We support the ambitious goals of the Climate Leadership Act and realize the importance of controlling greenhouse gas emissions and why that's important for all of us. However, we need to reach these goals without bringing unnecessary pain to businesses, workers, our community, and our economy. The draft scoping plan calls for many things, but we feel that it's short on how the costs to meet these requirements will be met, and that we'll have the reliability we need to make it through a harsh, upstate New York winter. Natural gas, propane, and heating oil are vital for New Yorkers' quality of life. From rural areas to inner cities, these energy sources are heavily relied on. What would it cost to switch over? $1,000 for a new stove oven, $2,700 for a hot water heater, a 200-amp electric service upgrade from $2,000 to $4,500, and $10,000, $12,000 for a new furnace. That's $15,000 per house, best-case scenario. Worst-case scenario, you're looking closer to $25,000. That doesn't include the cost, the increased cost of running these appliances on electric. Electrification is currently three-and-a-half times more expensive than natural gas. There's a reason we rely so heavily on natural gas, that so many of the appliances in our home run on natural gas. It is much cheaper and more efficient than electric. I'm not suggesting we abandon the important goals of the Climate Leadership and Community Protection Act. I'm asking that before we set any requirements, we develop a comprehensive plan that answers the following questions. How will the grid handle the increased demand? How can we ensure reliability? What methods are best for reaching these goals, whether it be high-efficiency natural gas, hydrogen, bio, nuclear, all the options on the tables? What new technologies should be used? Are these technologies proven?
I'm going to have to ask you to stop, but thank you very much. You can submit the rest of your comments in writing. Thank you. Sebastian, before we start, for those in the back, fire department would rather we sit, so if you could please come in and sit. There are plenty of seats down here, lots of them. Okay? Thank you. Sebastian?
Nicole Morris McLoughlin, Senior Energy Development Specialist, Erie County.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Nicole, as Sebastian said, and I work for Erie County in the Department of Environment and Planning. I manage a program called Eclipse, which stands for Erie County Low Income Program for Sustainable Energy. The scope of this program is to swiftly transition the region to clean energy through community choice aggregation, community solar, and other local clean energy solutions, such as district systems and microgrids with battery storage. We plan to do all this while making sure the county's disadvantaged communities are first in line to the benefits of the region transitioning to clean energy. Why prioritize disadvantaged communities? Because disadvantaged communities bear the brunt of negative health effects associated with burning fossil fuels, they are exposed to high levels of environmental pollution, and the worst impacts of climate change. Erie County strongly supports the Climate Action Council's components of the strategy to promote community choice aggregation. Community choice aggregation programs allow municipalities to make bulk power purchases on behalf of participating homes and businesses in their jurisdiction, making it easier for residents and employers to benefit from local clean energy projects, while also improving project economics and advancing the Climate Act requirements. We support these following solutions. Number one, expand community choice aggregation eligibility. DPS should enable county governments to authorize and form community choice aggregation programs with local opt-out. Allowing county governments to authorize and form community choice aggregation programs with local opt-out would empower Erie County to lead the way to efficiently and swiftly transition the region to clean, affordable energy. This would have wide-ranging health benefits for the region and would create green jobs. Number two, support community choice aggregation and community distribution initiatives. Nicerta should continue to encourage development of community choice aggregation programs, where communities choose 100% renewable energy as a default supply and where participants are automatically enrolled in community solar.
Thank you so much for your comments. If you submit the rest in writing, appreciate it. Caroline?
Michelle Hook, Executive Director, New Yorkers for Affordable Energy Coalition.
The New Yorkers for Affordable Energy Coalition is a nonprofit group working to ensure that the lights stay on and energy costs stay low for all New Yorkers. As the Climate Action Council works to address climate change, it needs to truly ask itself a question. Is it trying to lower greenhouse gas emissions or simply eradicate the use of fossil fuels, even if it means higher emissions and higher costs in the short term? Because many of the recommendations that have been put forth are not only detrimental to the environment, they fail to consider cost. Let me provide an example. The immediate environmental impact of constricting the supply of natural gas forces the grid to operate on much dirtier fuels. A recent report out of the New England ISO shows that CO2 emissions are up to 4.5 times higher due to a lack of natural gas. This is obviously worse for our environment. And most of those oil-fueled power plants in New York and throughout New England are in EJ communities. These plants emit high levels of nitrogen oxide and sulfur dioxide, known contributors to asthma and respiratory illness. Second, there has to be a viable option to replace what is being taken away. Without dispatchable power options, a growing renewable grid creates the potential for gaps in power supply. As your council points out on page 74 of your draft plan, firm dispatchable resources will be necessary to ensure a reliable system beyond 2040. Your plan also points out that power that is weather-dependent needs a backup. New York needs to take an all-of-the-above approach. As more intermittent forms of generation are added to the grid, it's imperative that New York keep existing gas infrastructure well-maintained and incentivize dispatchable technologies like RNG and hydrogen. Rather than banning fossil fuels, decision-makers should truly look at the best ways to reduce emissions and transition to a low-carbon economy at a pace that won't have environmental, economic, and reliability consequences for decades to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Sebastian, hold for a second. Do we have Abigail McHugh-Grypha here? Would you like to come down and speak, please? Thank you. Sebastian, why don't you go first?
Abigail McHugh-Grypha, Executive Director, Climate Solutions Accelerator of the Genesee Finger Lakes Region. So I just want to apologize first for jumping the line. Not my intention, not sure why it happened. But good afternoon. My name's Abby McHugh-Grypha. I'm the executive director of the Climate Solutions Accelerator of the Genesee Finger Lakes Region, a member of New York State's Climate Justice Working Group, and the mother of two sweet, but mischievous little boys who inspire me to dedicate my time and energy to fighting for a swift and equitable transition to clean energy. First off, I'd like to express my support for the Climate Act and gratitude to all the many people who were involved in getting this important piece of legislation passed and developing the scoping plan. There's a lot to love about the Climate Act, and my priority is to see it fully implemented. That will require significant investment. According to the state's own cost-benefit analysis, the cost of inaction exceeds the cost of action by at least $80 billion, and accelerating the transition off of fossil fuels leads greater benefit and savings than a slower transition that maintains the use of low-carbon fuels. In other words, moving quickly to implement the Climate Act absolutely makes financial sense for New York State. That said, the lack of a dedicated funding mechanism is the Climate Act's greatest weakness, which is why I encourage you to establish an equitable, economy-wide pollution fee to generate the necessary funds in a just manner. Through my participation in the Climate Justice Working Group, I also became acutely aware of the need for better mechanisms for tracking and sharing data on key progress indicators to ensure that we are meeting both the emissions reduction targets and the benefits of investment targets set by the Climate Act. In describing how disadvantaged communities would benefit from the transition to clean energy, sorry? The language of the law is rather squishy, which should be corrected to ensure that investment dollars are appropriately and equitably spent. Ultimately, the success of the Climate Act will depend on enforcement of both environmental justice provisions and the emissions reduction targets and timelines. Clear rules must be in place to define what happens if Climate Act goals are not met, and entities that do not adhere to the law must be held accountable. The climate crisis requires nothing less than full compliance with the law across all sectors of our economy, which should be reflected in the scoping. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Caroline?
Rawa Germatsian, Executive Director, Push Buffalo.
Hello, everyone. I'm also a member of the Climate Justice Working Group and a mother of a beautiful eight-year-old boy with lots of joy and asthma. A growing number of organizations like mine are already addressing the climate crisis through solutions that go beyond reducing emissions to transform the health, economic, and social outcomes in our communities by shifting dominant worldviews that separate us from each other and Mother Earth. What I'm asking for is for, what our communities need is to build a sustainable future in New York State, and what we're asking leaders and the Climate Action Council is to have the political will and courage to abandon false solutions like biofuels, renewable natural gas, biomass, waste incineration, and the so-called green hydrogen. The plan must focus on renewable, zero-emission technologies that have been proven to work, like solar, geothermal, and wind technologies. That environmental justice must come first. That the Climate Leadership and Community Protection Act must be adequately funded. Nicerta's own modeling shows a minimum of $10 billion is needed with an increase each year to implement. Climate disasters and pollution are already costing New York State over $27 billion a year. Full transition will generate greater benefits to our community. The Climate Action Council has put forward three scenarios. We are advocating for Scenario Three. The Climate Leadership and Community Protection Act is the law. Hundreds and thousands of New Yorkers like me, over years, have gone to the halls of Albany and demanded these solutions. Frontline communities like mine have already been taking the bold steps of showing the Climate Leadership and Community Protection Act in action. It is working. It is creating thriving communities. If you don't believe me, come to the west side of Buffalo and take a tour. Thank you.
Thank you. Sebastian?
Shelby Neal, VP Renewables, Darling Ingredients Incorporated.
Thank you, Sebastian. Thanks, members of the council, first of all, for your service. I've appreciated watching your work and appreciate the comprehensive, unbiased nature of the work. Again, my name's Shelby Neal. I'm VP of Renewables for a company called Darling Ingredients. Darling's the largest collector of used cooking oil from restaurants, bakery byproducts from bakeries, as well as animal byproducts from restaurants and grocery stores around the state. Once we get that material, we collect it in places like Buffalo here, Williams Street, about four miles down, as well as Newark. We're a union shop, employ about 52 people in the state, and are a supporter of a circular economy. We also, not coincidentally, produce renewable diesel fuel from these waste byproducts. According to the California Air Resources Board, where we currently have to send our product now, we reduce greenhouse gases by 86%, particulate matter by over 30%, NOx by more than 10%, and critical toxics like benzene and tylenine by 100%. So there are very substantial and immediate benefits. New York DCAST, the city of New York, has said that if a clean fuel standard were implemented, the city would immediately transition its 11,000 pieces of diesel equipment to renewable diesel and biodiesel. You would immediately see 50% reductions in greenhouse gas reduction and criteria pollutants. This would have an immediate benefit. We appreciate the Action Council's mention of a clean fuel standard, but would request that that language be strengthened and more words be put around that, because we feel strongly that this is the least expensive, best way to move forward. Just one example, California, which has a clean fuel standard, saw last Friday the announcement of the first major commercial sustainable aviation fuel production facility in the country. That's a $2 billion investment by one of our competitors right outside of Los Angeles. Not only will they see the emissions benefits, 50% or greater, at their airports, they will see $2 billion worth of union construction jobs and union jobs to maintain and run that facility in perpetuity. So there are very tangible benefits.
Thank you very much for your comments.
Thank you.
Caroline?
Bridge Rouch, Community Organizer, Clean Air Coalition of Western New York.
Good afternoon. We strongly support Scenario Three of the plan and robust immediate implementation of the CLCPA with healthy state funding, but we're here today because we feel there are areas where the plan can be strengthened. We want assurances that the implementation will not only be green, but also just. Specifically, we want to see a worker and community assurance fund and community benefits agreements attached to state subsidies. With all green economy projects, we want to see prevailing wages and benefits, strong benchmarks for local hire, and project labor agreements. We want to see our communities made whole by cleaning up every single brownfield from legacy industries, with community advisory groups, such as the one at Tonawanda Coke, giving insight and the responsible industries footing the cleanup costs. We also feel that the lack of emphasis on brownfield cleanups within the plan misses a key opportunity as a potential climate change resiliency program, especially given the growing risks that flooding presents in spreading the contaminants from those sites, and that cleaned-up brownfields on waterfront areas can potentially serve as floodwater mitigation buffer zones while creating public green spaces. We want to see robust and frequent public transit available in every neighborhood of every city, and restoration of the interurban transit services throughout the state that members of state enjoyed it 100 years ago. We want to see a strengthened state support for Amtrak rail services, specifically targeting the routes predominantly or exclusively within New York State for high-speed rail services, and make that the fastest mode of travel from Niagara Falls to New York City. New York State DOT finally completing the long-delayed High-Speed Rail Environmental Impact Study would put us closer to this goal. Finally, we strongly support an immediate moratorium on proof-of-work blockchain mining using fossil-based, fossil-fuel-based power, and we strongly recommend penalizing the refiring of shuttered fossil-fuel power generation stations in environmental justice communities by private industries, especially in light of the pressure from private industry to reuse these stations utilizing false solutions like so-called renewable natural gas. We will also be submitting additional written comments and are very excited for the next steps of the CLCPA as it moves from legislation to regulatory action and direct services to New York State residents. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you. Sebastian?
Sean Redden, Business Manager, Local 22 Plumbers and Steamfitters.
I want to, I want to thank the Climate Action Council for the opportunity to speak at today's event. Like Sebastian said, my name is Sean Redden. I'm the business manager for Local 22 Plumbers and Steamfitters. I represent 1,000 of the hardest-working men and women in the building trades. Local 22 is in favor of an all-of-the-above energy approach. The New York State Climate Action Council relaced its draft scoping plan, which is state's recommendations for how to achieve the ambitious greenhouse gas emissions reductions in the 2019 Climate Action, Climate Leadership, Community Protection Act. 2024, no new gas service for construction or existing buildings. 2030, no new gas appliances for home heating, cooking. 2035, no gasoline automobile cells. Costs, natural gas, propane, and heating oil are vital Costs, natural gas, propane, and heating oil are vital to New Yorkers' quality of life. With many people living in rural communities and having to endure harsh winters, limiting or access to these dependable energy sources would make heating homes and businesses unaffordable. Electrification is at least three and a half times more expensive than natural gas. Before any plan is approved, New Yorkers deserve and demand a full picture of what these recommendations mean for them. There has been no comprehensive cost analysis of what it would cost individuals and businesses to achieve the goals of the CLCPA. Estimates put costs in the billions of dollars. If climate leadership is worth the cost, why is this information being hidden from the public? Environmental justice is important consideration, but so is energy poverty that will be felt by state residents when they are forced to pay bills that are as much as four times higher than they are now. Maybe New Yorkers are willing to pay additional costs associated with the fight against climate change, but shouldn't it be up to them? Reliability. Recent power outages in Texas and California demonstrate the need for careful planning and not reactive policies as New York begins its transition to energy systems.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Please submit the rest in writing. Caroline?
Randy Richinsky, Utility Consultation Group.
Good afternoon. I'm making this statement on behalf of the Utility Consultation Group, or the UCG, representing New York's major electric and gas utilities. The UCG was formed in December of 2020 to provide expertise to the Climate Action Council and be a resource for its advisory panels. Our companies operate the complex systems that deliver energy our customers need at home and in their businesses. We are committed to using our significant experience to assist the state in achieving its emission reduction goals. Given the complexity of energy systems and the transformation required to meet the state's goals, it's imperative that the state's focus be on the continued provision of safe and reliable energy for our customers. To achieve deep decarbonization while ensuring reliable service requires optimization of energy delivery systems and reliance on a multitude of existing and future energy resources. We recommend keeping all energy options on the table at this early stage of the decarbonization process. Electrifying portions of our energy system that rely on other sources of energy will require additional infrastructure to meet the demands of a cleaner, larger electric network. We should look at the entirety of the energy system to ensure the most cost-effective approach to achievement of CLCPA goals. The gas distribution system must continue to serve customers safely and reliably. In the future, that system can facilitate energy decarbonization by flowing low- and no-carbon energy, like renewable natural gas and hydrogen. We support robust research initiatives to develop these and other necessary technologies, such as electric storage, carbon capture, and geothermal systems. With our proven track record of emissions reductions and meeting energy delivery needs, we are committed to helping the state meet its climate goals while together ensuring a reliable, safe, cost-effective, clean-energy future for our customers. Thank you.
Thank you. Sebastian?
Ellen Banks, Conservation Chair, Sierra Club Atlantic Chapter.
Hello. As you said, I'm Ellen Cardone Banks. I'm the Conservation Chair of the Sierra Club Atlantic Chapter, representing about 50,000 members and supporters across New York State and a charter member of New York Renews. It's time to put out the fires. Taming fire changed our early ancestors into modern humans. Cooking changed our metabolism. Fire kept us warm, scared predators away, and let us stay up late talking about the questions we still ask. A million years of fire. We have fires in our homes, mostly in metal boxes, so we don't think about it that way until something explodes. It's time to move on. Our climate crisis is increasingly dire. Western states are burning. A third of our greenhouse gases come from fire in buildings. Fire is making our planet sick, and it's also making our people sick. We have new ways. The technology is here, is proven, and it is highly cost-effective. No more fires in our buildings. What's stopping us? Corporate greed, cynical political posturing, and engineered ignorance promoting fear and can't-do attitudes. Fear is not what made New York great. The climate law is for the people and the planet. The cost of change is billions less than the cost of business as usual. The third pathway in the scoping plan will take us a long way to the goals of New York State's law. But we can do better. The state needs to stop gas infrastructure in new buildings and phase out gas-burning appliances. We need a firm ban on fossil-fueled electricity. No new gas transmission pipelines and no unsound solutions like hydrogen, green gas, and plant-poisoning nuclear. The harm from burning fossil fuel falls most heavily on communities of people of color and low income, and phasing out the fires must be prioritized for those communities. My little grandchildren live downwind of the Astoria Power Plants in Queens that continue to release asthma-causing toxins into the air. All our grandchildren deserve a combustion-free, safe, clean planet.
Thank you for your comments. Caroline?
Grant Loomis, Vice President, Government Affairs and Economic Development, Buffalo Niagara Partnership.
Good afternoon. The Buffalo Niagara Partnership is the Regional Chamber of Commerce. On behalf of our members, who employ over a quarter of a million people in the region, we believe much of the council's plan is praiseworthy, but we must strike the right balance between protecting our planet and ensuring that energy remains both affordable and reliable. From our vantage point, the plan fails regarding both affordability and reliability. By design, the plan rapidly phases out natural gas into obsolescence. Natural gas is affordable and abundant, which is why it powers so much of our life in upstate New York. Estimates show it would be three times more expensive for a large-volume Buffalo manufacturer to run on electricity instead of natural gas. Do we really think that that manufacturer will just absorb those costs without impact? Retrofitting natural gas-based buildings and mandating non-gas appliances would come at great expense, too, not only for employers but residential ratepayers. Removing natural gas from our state's portfolio also creates grid reliability concerns. The energy natural gas provides would have to be replaced by electricity, which would add considerable demands onto a power grid that is already strained. Natural gas is extremely reliable, and its underground and resilient infrastructure makes service interruptions almost unheard of. Conversely, renewable energy generators can be less reliable, and fallen power lines are common, especially in bad weather. If electricity is the only option for home heating, a power outage could become a grave problem during a cold Buffalo winter. If this plan is adopted, New York will spend a fortune to electrify every piece of our state without being prepared to produce and distribute the electricity needed. In the process, the state would shun a fuel source that is affordable, safe, dependable, plentiful, and low emission. New York can and must move toward a sustainable future without energy becoming more expensive and less reliable. We'll also be submitting more detailed comments, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Sebastian?
Bill Snyder, Assistant Vice President, National Fuel Gas.
National Fuel is a natural gas utility that has been in the state for more than a century and serves a market of more than 1.2 million residents and businesses in western New York. Like many employees at National Fuel Gas, I live and work in New York. I have my entire adult life. And I'm raising my family here, and my three kids are fifth-generation New Yorkers. This is important for them and our entire community. National Fuel supports New York's greenhouse gas reduction goals. We are committed to working with the state to achieve those goals in a responsible way that ensures safe, reliable, and affordable energy delivery for our customers. To successfully achieve the amazing energy transformation required by the CLCPA, no single form of energy will be sufficient. Bans on natural gas service and appliances, closure of portions of the natural gas system, and economy-wide electrification are extraordinary measures that will, one, impair energy reliability and, two, increase costs for consumers, no question. The scoping plan should create a blueprint to optimize the natural gas system in concert with the electric system. Just as the electric system can be decarbonized with renewables like wind and solar, so too can the natural gas system using renewable natural gas and hydrogen. Other states and countries have implemented policies and regulatory frameworks that encourage development of these decarbonization tools, and New York should do the same, especially for upstate and western New York. An all-electric model is too expensive and risks reliability and resiliency of the energy delivery systems. Adoption of a hybrid dual-energy pathway using storm-resistant, underground natural gas networks to deliver renewable gas and hydrogen can reduce emissions while minimizing the strain on the grid. New York's climate goals can be reached with a balance of the "all-above" approach that uses a mix of energy sources and doesn't impose unnecessary risks and burdens on the state's residents and businesses. We urge the council to adopt a hybrid pathway that fully utilizes our existing gas and electric networks and recommend consideration of renewable gas standards similar to those adopted by other jurisdictions. Thank you.
Thank you. Caroline?
Douglas Galley, Directive, Government Relations, Reed Petroleum Corporation.
Good afternoon. I'd like to thank the Climate Action Council for this opportunity to speak, not only on behalf of my industry but on behalf of the silent majority of New Yorkers. I also currently serve as the Chair for the New York Association of Convenience Stores. Addressing a plan to eliminate natural gas and near-full electrification of everything, there's nowhere in this plan on what the cost will be and if it is at all possible to achieve this. Existing electric-based clean-energy technologies cannot meet forecasted demand and maintain reliability. The sun does not always shine. The wind does not always blow at the right velocity, even in western New York. Where is the plan to increase safe and renewable nuclear energy? France gets just over 70% of electricity generation from nuclear energy. What do they know that we don't know? Electrifying everything requires an electric system build-out of three to three-and-a-half times the current peak usage. The state's electric grid operator, NISO, published its concern about declining levels of reliability as early as 2023. Reduced resiliency of the grid is a matter of public safety. A renewables-based grid is not resilient because of the unpredictability of weather. In 2020, there were 74 instances where there was not enough wind power to wind turbines for more than eight hours at a time. In January 2022, New York hit an all-time high for wind output at 1,808 megawatts of power from wind turbines. Twelve hours later, that output dropped to just 20 megawatts. 94% of energy used in the coldest western New York winter day is currently provided by natural gas. Western New York is 56% colder than downstate. The burden of decarbonizing will fall hardest on upstate and western residents, while downstate New York produces more emissions. I won't go into the cost of an individual home, but for our industry, we have natural gas HVAC systems, ovens, fryers, hot water heaters. Electric fires are two to five times higher than natural gas, and HVAC system is twice the cost of a $20,000 system. All this would do is drive up the cost to consumers, which will be hit doubly with the increased cost for their home and then for the utilities, and the cost that businesses will have to pass along to them.
I want to thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
And submit the rest in writing. Sebastian?
Clark Docker, Director of Policy and Strategy, Push Buffalo.
Thanks for having me today. I'll note that Push is a member of the New York Renews Coalition. I've also had the privilege of serving on the Energy Efficiency and Housing Advisory Panel. Here in Buffalo, we demand green and healthy housing with some of the highest, or sorry, some of the oldest housing stock in the country. And after years of disinvestment in racist redlining practices that have starved poor and working-class communities and communities of color of funding needed to maintain our homes, we need major investments in our communities to address the deteriorating physical condition of the buildings that we live in. The state must create a community just-transition fund that prioritizes investments in efficiency retrofit and electrification readiness in disadvantaged communities and the affordable housing sector. These funds will be used to replace our roofs, update our electrical service, repair our foundations, and remove environmental toxins from our homes. Without these investments, a majority of Buffalo's residents will not be able to participate in the renewable energy economy imagined by the CLCPA. We must protect our communities from gentrification and displacement. As New York State directs investments to disadvantaged communities, it needs to prevent landlords who receive funding for weatherization and building electrification from raising rents while at the same time empowering local governments with tools like Good Cause Eviction that will strengthen tenant protections. In Buffalo, renters are often required to open utility accounts in their name, yet they're unable to make improvements to their homes and apartments that will reduce their energy costs. Energy efficiency performance standards for existing buildings, coupled with strong tenant protections, are the way we need to go. Lastly, make polluters pay. Fund the CLCPA. Make polluters pay. Fund the CLCPA.
So thank you for not joining that chant. That would take away from other people who want to speak. Caroline?
Sarah Schultz, Sierra Club Niagara Group.
I also want to represent the interfaith climate justice community and Renewable Heat Now. Thank you so much to the panel, and thank you to the Climate Action Council. A quote from first-century Rabbi Hillel, "If not now, when?" Also, words of 21st-century Rabbi Narle, "Short-term thinking, greed, and arrogance are leading to our existential crisis." As New Yorkers who in 2017 were the leading contributors of greenhouse gases produced by buildings, we must take the lead in electrification of the built environment. In spite of over 100 years of scientific evidence on climate change, there is still an increase in carbon every year. This is no time for short-term thinking. The economy is more threatened by climate disasters than it is by a fair and just transition to electrification. Why would we lock ourselves into dirty fuel for new construction or buying new appliances? Let's invest in New York's future, not the past. Regarding safety between 2010 and 2019, the US experienced over 1,400 major gas-related incidents resulting in deaths, injuries, and destruction. Regarding health, gas stoves create unhealthy kitchens, particularly in the smaller homes of lower-income families. Regarding the geopolitical costs of fossil fuel dependence for many years, petro-states have fought for greater resources. War cuts down everything in its path. We see daily that nothing is flourishing on the Ukrainian warfront. In this global economy, we pay a steep price. The CLCPA is law, and laws need teeth. Penalties and rewards. My geothermal, solar panels, and Chevy Bolt would not have been possible without subsidies, tax incentives, and New York State energy loans. Please be bold and wise and make it possible for every being, from plankton to the pollinators, to thrive in a clean and safe environment. If not now, when?
Thank you. Could I have Group Three and Group Four, please? Caroline?
Dawn Wells Clyburn, Push Buffalo.
Thank you. We had to create a law to convince industry to reduce emissions but lacked the funding to make it actionable. We need air to live, to breathe, to thrive. I am a mother of two beautiful children who suffer from asthma. I live in Erie County, and Erie County has one of the highest rates of asthma for children in the state, particularly those of us that live in the city and near highways, railways, abandoned buildings. My children were born on a street with concentrated air pollution. The impact of years of disinvestment and redlining has resulted in raising our children in a home that was surrounded by a railroad, which is diesel pollution, an abandoned asbestos pollution from Bandag Tire Manufacturer, two major streets that are veins in and out of the city with concentrated nitrogen dioxide riddled with vacant homes. We need Scenario Three. CLCPA must be funded. Please. Thank you.
Thank you. Sebastian?
Keith Selman, Senior Project Developer, Vice Chair, Cypress Creek Renewables, Alliance for Clean Energy, New York.
Thank you. Cypress Creek Renewables is a solar and energy storage company very active across the US. We have several operating community-scale solar projects in New York and are developing a pipeline of community and large-scale solar and energy storage projects in New York as well, including locally the 100-megawatt Bear Ridge Solar Project in the towns of Cambria and Pendleton, Niagara County. Both Cypress Creek and the Alliance for Clean Energy strongly support the Climate Action Council draft scoping plan in its entirety. Implementing New York's scoping plan will help reduce greenhouse gas emissions, which in turn will mitigate the effects of global climate change. To achieve the 70-by-30 mandate, New York needs to advance a significant pipeline of projects into the construction phase and overcome any barriers to project development. For renewable project developers, a critical element is a clear and certain market demand. NYSERDA provides this by maintaining a steady procurement strategy for Tier One renewables. We agree with the draft scoping plan that the Office of Renewable Energy Siting should continue to improve and streamline the cost-effective, timely, and environmentally responsible siting of large-scale renewable energy projects across New York while delivering significant benefits to local communities. We strongly support co-utilization of solar energy and agriculture. New York State should continue to encourage and facilitate collaboration between the renewable energy industry and the farming community to advance the objectives of the CLCPA while preserving the state's vital agricultural sector. To be successful in reaching this mandate, significant investment in new transmission resources will be required. resources will be required. The state should identify key transmission and distribution upgrades, improvements, and new line construction needed to deliver renewable energy. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Caroline?
Sarah Frazier, Creative Visionary, DLS Creative Solutions and Design.
Thank you for having us. The way it goes, I am a tenant from the east side of Buffalo. I grew up here. I have a 12-year-old child. He's a boy. What are we leaving our children? What are we leaving to the rest of the world? The CLCPA allows us a plan to be able to regenerate, reuse, rethink the way that we do things. It changes our mindset. It gives education, and it changes the miseducation as to what it is for true justice transitioning. Economic and governmental systems being taken down and changed so that everybody is included and has a seat at the table when everything's being discussed and all these policies are being discussed and it's time for us to figure out how we're going to go about changing our world, changing what happens, how things are done. We don't feel like we have a voice. We don't feel like we're heard, so we don't come to the table because we feel like it doesn't matter. No one's going to listen anyways. But if we see people, if we see people of biopic communities at the table, if we see people who are backing with us and standing with us and listening to our ideas and actually implementing them, then we will come alongside, we will come behind, and we will be that change that we want to see. Thank you.
Thank you. Sebastian?
Craig Volmer, Executive Director, New York Forest Owners Association.
Thank you. I'm also a certified professional forester. We represent the private forest owners of New York State and one of the leading voices on forest-related issues. Our mission is to promote sustainable forest management and stewardship. For 60 years, we've been on the front line of helping keep forests of New York wild, working, and sustainable for everyone's benefit. The forests of New York are the most widespread resource and landscape feature in our state. They sequester carbon, protect water, clean the air, support wildlife, provide wood products, and support local jobs in a significant industry that grows, harvests, and manufactures wood, paper, and building products, products that sequester carbon for long periods and offer substitution benefits to products otherwise derived from fossil fuels. And unlike fossil fuels, our forests also provide a renewable, carbon-neutral source of heat and energy for homes and businesses. These benefits are produced and enhanced from well-managed, working, private forests. Our primary concern with the Draft Scoping Plan is that it fails to adequately acknowledge who actually owns the forest. 14 million acres, or 75% of New York's forest, is owned by about 600,000 New Yorkers. The vast majority is in small, private, family ownership. It further fails to recognize and support the importance of keeping private forests working. Contrary to what others say, preserved forests will not mitigate climate change. Many of the recommended actions in the Draft Scoping Plan will lead to regulations and legislation that will not support working forests. We need to focus on strategies that capitalize on working, sustainable forests. Without that, our forests instead will be exploited and put to other uses that are not forest or climate-friendly and lead to a collapse of an important industry. Thank you for hearing our concerns. We will be submitting comments in writing as well.
Thank you. Caroline?
Ken Kujawa, Regional Director, National Grid.
My name is Ken Kujawa, and I am National Grid's Regional Director of Customer and Community Management in Western New York and here to tell you there is a better way. Last week, National Grid launched our vision to eliminate fossil fuels from our gas and electric systems by 2050 to reach our shared greenhouse gas reduction goals. In Western New York, National Grid is an electric utility, and greater electrification will play a critical role in the clean energy future. Weatherization and energy efficiency are also critical to reduce overall energy use. A third critical element is to eliminate the, is to utilize the existing natural gas network to deliver low-carbon and no-carbon fuels. This hybrid approach can achieve net zero more reliably and with more affordable customer options, ensuring no community is left behind in the clean energy transition. The energy system must be looked at as a whole. Reliability, affordability, and optimization are all issues that must be addressed. The New York Independent System Operator has raised concerns about the Power Generation Advisory Panel's recommendations on eliminating certain types of generation facilities. The New York State Reliability Council and New York State ISO reliability planning process must be included in the analysis of system reliability for the state. New York is currently a summer-peaking electric system. Building the electric network to meet a new winter peak based on full electrification is not cost-effective. As the incumbent electric utility, we are calling on the state to support a better approach by leveraging existing networks to deliver low- and no-carbon fuels to reduce greenhouse gas emissions as quickly as possible, reduce unnecessary new infrastructure, maintain reliability, and provide more affordable transition options for customers. The plan cannot exclude current viable solutions, nor can it exclude developing technologies. A coordinated gas and electric decarbonization strategy is a better way to manage the cost and feasibility risks of the state's plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Sebastian?
Corey Schuler, Executive Director, Niagara, USA Chamber of Commerce.
Good afternoon. My name is Corey Schuler. I'm the Executive Director of Niagara, USA Chamber of Commerce, one of the largest business advocacy organizations in Western New York. Thank you to the Climate Action Council for allowing us to express our thoughts on New York's Climate Leadership and Community Protection Act. While there are positives within this proposal, and I think we all agree that climate change is a serious issue that we need to tackle, on behalf of the Niagara, USA Chamber and the businesses and communities we represent, we feel there are unanswered questions that need to be addressed. In Western New York, there are approximately 90% of the homes heated with natural gas, a change to full electric will have a major cost component. It has been estimated that an average home upgrade will cost roughly at a minimum $23,000. In a county like Niagara with a socioeconomic makeup, these measures will be devastating. For example, in a city like Niagara Falls, where the median income for a family is around $36,000, there's no way this will be affordable. So that means either you have to be rate increased to create a fund to help cover costs, or there'll have to be a tax enacted to pay for these changes. Either way, the cost will be passed on to an already overburdened citizenship and to the businesses. We haven't heard nothing on how this will be paid for. One of the other issues we feel that needs to be addressed before this policy is enacted is the idea of a backup plan if the grid were to fail. If we are moving more and more load onto an aging infrastructure we have in Western New York, there is a strong chance the grid could not handle such additional load. So what happens if the grid were to fail? Has there been any discussion on what solutions or measures will be taken to ensure the safety of our citizens and how to protect our businesses? There are definitely some good ideas within the CLCPA, and now is the time to address climate change, but we need to look at all aspects and outcomes before we move too fast into something of this magnitude. Thank you.
Thank you. Caroline?
Kevin Kucharsky, President/CEO, Invest Buffalo Niagara.
Good afternoon. Thanks for being here. Our organization's mission is to attract new employees and employers to the Buffalo-Niagara region through outreach to growing companies around the world. We work with companies looking to grow in Western New York in an effort to create jobs and capital investment. Let me start by saying that Invest Buffalo Niagara is not an advocacy organization. We are an eight-county region's public-private-not-for-profit economic development organization that proactively promoting the regional assets to companies and targeted industries around the globe. It is our perspective as an economic development organization and professional project managers that brings me to these hearings today. Invest Buffalo Niagara supports the state's efforts to address the issue of climate change, but we are concerned that the Climate Act, as currently envisioned, will have a negative impact on future economic development and economic growth strategies in Western New York and New York State. Through research and due diligence performed with sophisticated databases, 60% of regional organizations under consideration often get eliminated even before contact is made with that organization, such as our organization, Invest Buffalo Niagara. Radical changes in the Climate Act, where employers may bear the burden of additional costs, may lead to states like New York and regions like Buffalo Niagara being eliminated from consideration even before they have an opportunity to sell our region. Invest Buffalo Niagara supports the proposed hybrid approach that retains the utilization of the existing natural gas network and blends both hydrogen and renewable natural gas into the system in order to reduce carbon emissions. This approach will put New York in the best position to main reliability, affordability, supply, and position of the state for continued economic growth. On behalf of Invest Buffalo Niagara and all our private and public investors, thank you for the opportunity to share these sentiments, and thank you for your strong and consistent support for economic development initiatives all across the state. Thank you.
Thank you. Sebastian?
Colleen F. Balacino, President, IBW Local 2199.
Thank you. My name is Colleen Balacino. I represent the members of the IBW Local 2199. We work at National Fuel Gas, which is a natural gas supplier. I have so many concerns, it's hard to express them all in two minutes. I was shocked to learn that the cost to convert a single-family home to electric can range from anywhere from $20,000 to $50,000. Not to mention, electric is more expensive than natural gas, which means an increase to the customers of approximately $650 a year at the current rates. How is the average working person supposed to afford this transition, less alone a retiree on a fixed income? To note, Buffalo is the third poorest city in the nation. My next concern is the power grid's ability to meet the increased demand for winter heating and electric vehicles. From the articles that I've been reading, the reliability is just not there. We all agree that carbon emissions can and should be reduced, but this energy transition plan is moving so fast that it makes it dangerous and unwise for our safety. This transition will also have a devastating impact on our high-quality jobs that will vanish with no promise of equal replacement jobs. This will affect future generations to come and have a negative effect not only on our families but on our communities. I have worked for National Fuel for over 30 years. I've seen firsthand the company, how the company has worked hard to lower emissions and still provide safe, dependable, and affordable energy to the customers. We need a balanced approach, which is using a mix of energies, which includes natural gas, not eliminating it. Thank you very much for letting me voice my concerns. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Caroline?
Jill Heeps, Senior Attorney, Earth Justice.
Hi, I'm a senior attorney with Earth Justice, but I'm here today on behalf of my six-year-old Simon and urging immediate and aggressive action to combat climate change to give him and his kindergarten classmates a shot at a future that's not just one climate catastrophe after another. Immediate and aggressive action on climate change means, needs, means that we need to focus on four things in implementing the CLCPA. One, we have to prioritize the health and welfare of low-income communities and communities of color that are at the front lines of this climate crisis. We have to reduce coal pollutants in disadvantaged communities and front-load investments there so they can gain the benefits of an economic just transition. Number two, we have to electrify buildings and the transportation sector. We have the technology, we just need the political will. Number three, we have to reject false solutions such as renewable natural gas, biofuels, and hydrogen combustion. Renewable natural gas releases the same amount of greenhouse gases as fossil natural gas. Burning hydrogen will prolong reliance on gas, and it raises serious environmental justice and public health issues because it emits nitrogen oxides that cause respiratory illness. And number four, we have to enact a moratorium on proof-of-work cryptocurrency mining until the DEC can conduct an environmental review to study climate, grid, and environmental impacts. This is really important for Western New York, given the Greenwich facility and the north, the DigiHost facility in North Tonawanda. I'm here today because I want, 30 years from now, I want to be able to look him in the eye and say, "I fought for you. I fought for your future. I demanded immediate and aggressive action to fight climate change." Thank you.
Thank you. Sebastian?
Mr. Daniel Curran, IBW Local 36.
My name is Dan Curran. I'm a union officer here today representing IBW Local 36, in which 136 of our members are in the natural gas industry. I want to start off by saying that as a utility professional in the gas industry, natural gas is clean, safe, and reliable. I'd like to strongly urge this council in New York State to not ban natural gas until long-term solutions are developed. I can tell you, as a person who does this work, we will not be able to heat our homes properly in the winter if we do not immediately improve and invest in our electrical transmission and distribution system. The success of this state will depend on remaining flexible, persistent on research and development, and collaboration by all stakeholders. I would like this council to consider renewable gas, natural gas, and green hydrogen as a solution that will work in partnership with other emerging technologies. These decisions cannot be rushed. By rushing these decisions, it will create dangerous consequences in public safety and reliability. We need to work together to properly and effectively transition to a zero-carbon economy. I want to thank you for your time and urge you once again to stop the ban on natural gas until real solutions are developed. Thank you.
Thank you. Caroline?
John Wilde, Press Secretary, Registrar, IBW Local 10.
As a utility high-voltage lineman, I promise you that the plan is written will fail. It'll create dangerous consequences to our public safety by being unprepared for the increased electrical demand created by a natural gas ban. If we want to become fully electric in the near future, our heating systems and transportation methods will be dependent on electrical system capabilities. I can tell you, as a person in this line of work, we are unable, not able to convert from fossil fuels to fully electric with generation, transmission, and electrical distribution systems capability that we presently have. Increasing the reliability and resilience in electrical generation, transmission, and distribution systems should be this council's immediate priority. Eliminating other energy sources, such as natural gas, without a prepared electrical system is thoughtless and careless. The Climate Action Council has very ambitious demands, but those demands will not be met if we do not invest in a reliable electrical system. Mandates or bans mean nothing if there isn't an electrical system capable of handling the energy to our end user. I'm also concerned for the jobs in the natural gas industry that will be lost with this plan. These are good-paying jobs that contribute to our community's overall health. Promises by politicians for retraining and replacement of other workfields didn't pay out for the people in the coal power plant industry. The work was lost, people became unemployed, or they have been forced into lower-paying jobs. I witnessed this myself in the Somerset Operating Plant and the negative effects it had on the Barker, New York community. Our state's success in the fight against climate change will depend on remaining flexible and not taking any energy sources off the table until a replacement is in place. We need to increase focus on research and development in new technologies that can be used with our current infrastructure, such as green hydrogen or repowering exist or shuttering power plants with new technology. As a utility professional, I say this council has a unique opportunity to create a plan that will not only reduce our carbon footprint but create community-sustaining careers and be a blueprint for all communities for the world wide to file.
Thank you for your comments. Sebastian?
Daniel Heitzanreider, President and CEO, Chautauqua County, Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you, council members. I'm here today to urge the council to more heavily consider and weigh the necessary investment and upgrades to our infrastructure and how to pay for those upgrades, as well as taking a more blended approach with the CLCPA, and also to engage with the business community as a partner and an opportunity rather than as a funding mechanism. To illustrate these points, I have a quick story from one of our members, the Growers Cooperative, who is a grape juice processor based in Westfield, New York. Since the electrical rate is low as a municipal system in Westfield, many of the homes there are already converted to full electric. The village says that on the coldest days of winter, some of the spurs in the system are already experiencing voltage sags. So when those residences, more residences are adding more electric demand, there's going to be further drain downstream. Grape processors have a huge energy demand, which spikes during the harvest and when they have 30 days to get the grapes in, or else they fall to the ground. Half of their natural gas usage is currently consumed during September and October alone during harvest. Napkin math says that the Growers Cooperative alone would need 13 new primary transformers installed, which is already at the biggest capacity that the village's substation can protect. And in reality, the village would have to substantially upgrade their primary switchgear and go to higher-voltage distribution, which illustrates that this is not feasible when you figure Welch's, which is across the street, Mogan David down the street, and others in the community. So again, for reliability and the business community, please engage with the businesses as a priority to be engaged as part of the solution and opportunity rather than a payment mechanism. Thank you.
Thank you. Caroline?
Peter Aron, Executive Director, Buffalo Niagara Manufacturers Alliance.
Thank you, and good afternoon. My name's Peter Aron. I'm the Executive Director for the Buffalo Niagara Manufacturing Alliance. We represent the voice of 21,000 employees in manufacturing. The BNMA and our members are not climate deniers. We strongly support the council's commitment to reducing the council's commitment to reducing and then eliminating dangerous gas emissions. Members and I believe, however, the council is solely focused on meeting goals originally set out in 2019 CLCPA, which failed to contemplate complexities and excessive financial costs of achieving the goals in a limited timeframe. In its current form, the proposed law risks New Yorkers' basic and fundamental access to power that we take for granted today. I believe there are six areas that need to be considered: grid reliability, grid resistance, consumer choice, affordability, safety, and business opportunity. I'll address two. Affordability. Council's recommendations were made without a cost analysis, and this has led to a lack of transparency to all ratepayers as to the short- and long-term cost utilities and eventually each ratepayer will be responsible for, such as by 2035, only EV cars can be purchased in New York State. By 2050, all homes will need to convert fully electric. These expenditures alone will cost in excess of $50,000. Business opportunity. The council did not consider industry when forming the team. Involvement in industry will ensure collaboration, and industry can and will identify sustainable businesses that will lead to good-paying jobs, making product that can be sold to other states as they begin to adopt their similar legislation. I and alliances across New York State stand ready to work with the council to architect an approach that will accomplish the CLCPA goals and will support a hybrid approach for carbon-neutral energy and provide grid resiliency, reliability. Industry involvement will create solutions, which may lead to the creation and manufacturing of new products being produced in New York State. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Sebastian?
Kelly Camacho, Community Organizer, Citizen Action.
Okay. As stated, I'm Kelly Camacho, and I'd like to tell you why I support Scenario Three for the CLCPA. I live on the east side of Buffalo in a primarily low-income black community. And my community wasn't always a low-income community, but poverty was exacerbated in 1957, when the Kensington Expressway was built with the intention of making commute times easier for white suburban residents, but bringing air pollution and the loss of business to the people of color living there. I found out I had asthma when I was 24, which is actually pretty lucky compared to the fact that Erie County has some of the state's highest asthma rates for children under 17, due to our various forms of local environmental racism. It is not lost on me that people in power have historically made money making people like me sick. A few months ago, I had to stop taking a steroid inhaler cold turkey because my new insurance, one inhaler for one month would cost $300. Money is again being made off people being sick because in the USA, a developed country, we still don't even have universal healthcare yet. I was strong enough to stop taking my inhaler and survive, but what about the people who aren't? The earth is the Titanic, and climate change is the iceberg that we've already hit. Our ship is sinking as it takes on water, and we are still asking one another if we can turn the boat. Low-to-no bioenergy and hydrogen combustion with the electrification of buildings and transportation will ensure clean air and a healthy environment. A zero-emissions power sector by 2040 and a transition away from fossil fuels is a lifeboat that we are actively ignoring each day. Humanity's pretentiousness each day is causing the numbers of survivors of the climate crisis to lower. Drinkable water, food born from dirt, and clean air are all shared gifts given to all of us. These are the gifts that we have to take care of to pass them to the next generation. Today, my niece, who is in sixth grade, will testify, in case you forgot who is at stake. When the children look to you and ask why we did more for a man-made concept of the economy and jobs that will replace you overnight instead of the physical habitat that keeps us alive, I hope your answers are better than mine.
Thank you. Caroline?
Sophia Cruz, Cheek to Waga, New York.
Hello, everyone. I am here as a concerned resident of Western New York. I am a homeowner. I am a gas and electric utility ratepayer. I am a National Fuel Gas employee. I am opposed to the natural gas ban as outlined in the state's plan. The state's plan wants to radically eliminate a proven reliable and proven affordable source of energy. Natural gas hookups and services, including those from propane and heating oil, are vital for upstate New Yorkers, especially in rural communities and during harsh winters. The state's plan to eliminate natural gas as an option requires a high degree of electrification without the assurances of equivalent energy delivery, reliability, or affordability. Relying on one energy system for everything is risky. I strongly support the use and expansion of renewable green energy, but the fact remains that we can achieve this with a balanced approach that uses a mix of energy sources without outright banning of reliable and affordable natural gas options and without abandoning the natural gas system altogether. We know emissions can and should be reduced, and National Fuel has been doing that. As an energy company, we have reduced our delivery system's greenhouse gas emissions by 64% since 1990. Banning natural gas isn't necessary to achieve the state's emissions reduction targets. We can meet the state's emission targets without causing disruption of reliability that has a high probability of occurring if we cut over to electric power alone. We can reach the state's goals in a less burdensome way for consumers using all energy resources that are currently at our disposal, including natural gas.
Thank you. Sebastian?
Bianca Virgil, Volunteer, Citizen Action.
Hi, my name is Bianca Virgil. I am in sixth grade at School 30, Frank A. Sedida, and my Aunt Kelly is a community organizer at Citizen Action. We should protect the planet because the planet is important. It is the only planet that we can live on, and it is where we eat, drink, and breathe. We should use renewable energy to save renewable -- non-renewable resources. I want the world to be filled with life and love instead of destruction, deforestation, death, and trash all over the place. We should take care of the environment. We cannot thrive without the environment being healthy. If the environment is not healthy, we cannot be healthy. I feel that climate change is happening too fast because of pollution and people who cause pollution. We need to reduce reuse and recycle and use solar energy. In conclusion, save the planet.
Joshua Baird, Albean, New York.
Good evening. My name is Josh Baird. I live in the town of Barrie in Orleans County, New York, and I also represent AES Clean Energy as a Senior Permit Manager in New York and the Northeast, and my focus is on utility solar projects in New York. In New York, AES has over 80 employees with office locations in northern New York, western New York, and New York City. We currently operate 809 megawatts of reliable, safe, and clean wind and solar power and are developing 2 gigawatts of solar and standalone storage at the community and utility scale level. We have invested -- made a huge investment in New York State and plan to continue to invest more. AES supports the provisions in the draft Climate Action Plan that support and enable development of wind and solar power and other renewable electricity technologies. While my comments will focus on the electricity sector, I would like to convey AES's support for the recommendations focused on energy efficiency improvements and decarbonations for buildings and transportation electrification as well. We strongly support the fundamental component and objective of the Climate Act to ensure New York's transition to a low-carbon economy results in beneficial outcomes for traditionally underserved communities. I must also highlight for the Climate Action Council that to achieve the 70% by 2030 mandate, New York needs to advance a significant number of wind, solar, and battery projects into construction. There are many ways the state can support the goal: by continuing procurement out of the aggressive schedule of at least 4,500 gigawatt-hours yearly -- a year, 2022 through 2026; by rez continuing to approve and streamline the permitting process for cost-effective, timely, and environmentally responsible siting of renewable energy projects while ensuring significant benefits to local communities. Finally, solar development and successful agriculture can both thrive in New York State. The state provides strong incentives for solar projects to avoid prime soils and should continue to encourage collaboration between the renewable energy industry and the farming community. Carbon capture agriculture is a huge component of coutilization.
Thank you for your comments. Caroline?
Zaida Belendez, New York Renew's Extinction Rebellion.
Zaida Belendez, thank you. I'm a nurse and a retired professor of public health, but mostly what I am is an enraged grandmother, who is demanding that we stop picking down the can down the road and immediately apply and fully fund the Climate Protection Act. The "let them eat cake" approach that is our current system has to be reined in. I am thinking about New York State's current budget of $220 billion. That includes $600 million in state money, and locally, we are putting in $250 million for a $1.4 billion stadium. This is a climate emergency, people. It's outrageous when we could be making this a livable city, upgrading and replacing our aging and hardly sustainable houses, which are filled with lead paint and lead pipes poisoning our children. New York can lead the way. We have a GNP of $1.7 trillion per year. New York, if it was a country, would be the 11th biggest economy in the world. The CLCPA could have begun implementation with that money. We need a just transition and real and immediate proven climate solutions using solar and wind renewables, not the false solutions of things that have hardly been researched and that have only begun to become on the table. The so-called green hydrogen, which is made with fossil fuels, biofuels, using waste that pollutes and sickens people. We need a carbon tax of at least $50 per carbon ton, but it'd be more reasonable to make it $150. We have to stop using our atmosphere as a sewage system. We can't wait around for carbon capture tech.
Thank you for your comments.
Okay, thank you.
Could I have Groups Five and Group Six, please? Caroline?
Melissa Carlson, Rochester Architect.
I am an architect, a clean-energy business owner, and very involved in my farming community. I see climate change happening in all of those areas. We need laws to help us change quickly, as individual actions can't make enough of a difference. I support Scenario Three, accelerated transition away from combustion, and that is in buildings as well as transportation. We are already late for this transition. As an architect, I know that buildings count for a large portion of our emissions. I encourage my clients to build all-electric and insulate very well, but they only want me to design to code levels and use stock materials. So I need the code to be better, to be all-electric, in order to back me up. This is the year for legislation to change the code, or we have to wait three years for the next code change. Buildings need to change now. At home, I have a clothesline, and I have insulated my 100-year-old home. Not all solutions need high-tech. I also installed a geothermal heat pump and a heat pump water heater. I got big tax breaks to do so, and I want to see annual funding for these types of electrification and energy efficiency upgrades in low-income households. These folks are not my clients. They don't have a big tax burden, but there are many homes in Rochester that need much work. The members of these communities can be trained and given jobs to be involved in energy efficiency upgrades in our city's housing stock in their own communities. We need financial incentives and good public education to do this. The utilities should not proliferate the false solutions provided by the fossil fuel companies. They're both interested in short-term profit, and that's not your goal. Renewable natural gas is one false solution, unless it is used on-site by the producer. Utilities also need some incentives to go green. Polluter payments aren't punishments. They are a fair funding source. All of our solutions need ongoing funding. Thank you for your continued work.
Thank you. Sebastian?
Thomas Buford, President and CEO, Buffalo Urban League.
Thank you. The Buffalo Urban League helps African-Americans in underserved communities achieve economic self-reliance, power, parity, and civil rights. We empower them through education, job training, entrepreneurship, housing, community development, and family preservation. Buffalo's renaissance is continuing to flourish, but that proverbial rising tide has not raised all boats. History has shown that the most noble and well-intended local and global objectives have had disproportionately negative impact on low-income and communities of color, especially when the transition and early implementation phases don't have the forethought and protections that consider the existing challenges and the lack of equity that exists in these disadvantaged communities. New York State, and more specifically, communities in Western New York have some of the country's oldest and least energy-efficient housing stock. Decades of inadequate investment have made these poor conditions more dire in low-income communities. Additionally, the residents of the same communities, who continue to be marginalized, have not historically participated equitably in the projected benefits and economic opportunities through jobs and business opportunities that arise from the sweeping changes such as those that are set forth in the CLCPA Scoping Plan. This could well be considered a double tax and an undue burden on our citizens of the least means. The CLCPA should ensure that the targeted dates allow a sufficient, reliable, and tested infrastructure to be in place with equitable access for all communities capable of supporting even the most recent day-to-day swings in heating and cooling energy demands. The Buffalo Urban League strongly supports zero-emission energy opportunity. However, the safety and well-being of disadvantaged communities should not fall through the cracks while all-or-nothing systems and processes are being perfected. More importantly, these communities should not be subject to increased financial hardship and more disparate social determinants of health. A methodic and balanced hybrid approach should be more strongly considered, and we along with other community-based organizations want to be integral in the planning and monitoring of the CLCPA process.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Caroline?
Walter Simpson, Sierra Club Member.
My name is Walter Simpson. I'm a Sierra Club member who lives in Amherst in an energy-net-zero home with clothesline. I learned about climate change in 1980 and wondered then why we weren't doing something about it. Ideally, the decarbonization strategy of electrifying everything and then meeting those electric needs with renewable energy is the right one. However, electrifying everything means heating all buildings, new and existing, with electricity, empowering all vehicles with electricity. These giant new electric loads plus increased air conditioning as temperatures rise will cause electricity demand to skyrocket. Electric-resistant space heating and Bitcoin mining, if permitted, have the potential to make demand issues even worse. Utility-scale renewables like wind can only meet future electric needs if coupled with new and much more effective energy conservation and efficiency regulations and programs, unless we want more nuclear power to make up the difference. We need a climate plan that targets all buildings with deep energy conservation retrofits. Imagine a climate conservation corps tackling this agenda while providing hundreds of thousands of jobs. Financing mechanisms will be needed to ensure affordability. Realistically, a military-budget-sized budget is needed to accomplish these important goals, along with vastly increased incentives for conservation, solar, wind, and heat pumps. In all cases, we have just scratched the surface. Thank you.
Thank you. Sebastian?
Brian Welsh, Assistant Vice President, National Fuel Gas Distribution Corporation.
Good afternoon. I'm responsible for the Utility Rates and Regulatory Affairs Department. My family and I live in Amherst. National Fuel is committed to decarbonization and understands the need to take urgent, meaningful action if we are to achieve CLCPA targets. And I think there are several positive, sensible items in the draft scoping plan, namely the expansion of energy efficiency and the focus on disadvantaged communities. However, I am deeply concerned about the insistence that our path must include 100% electrification of the heating load, the banning of access to natural gas service, and the swift decommissioning of the state's reliable and resilient natural gas system. The rush to electrify everything at any cost promises to burden families with significantly higher energy bills while placing undue and potentially dangerous risk on the reliability of the energy systems. Perhaps just as important, though, the rush to electrify everything at any cost is not even necessary to achieve the CLCPA targets. Our studies show a more practical and balanced approach can be taken. Coupled with energy efficiency, the widespread adoption of hybrid electric and gas HVAC systems, particularly in colder regions like Western New York, and the incorporation of low-carbon fuels like RNG and hydrogen can significantly reduce household emissions and meet CLCPA goals. With the hybrid approach, we can electrify a significant portion of our base heating needs while keeping the gas system available to deliver affordable energy during the coldest parts of the year. We can avoid the cost of overbuilding the electric grid to meet the winter peak demands and the inevitable increase in electric rates that will follow. Instead, the plan takes these viable options to decarbonize off the table. We do not have to ignore affordability and sacrifice reliability. I urge I urge the CAC to strike a better balance.
Thank you. Caroline?
Todd Tranum, Executive Director, Manufacturers Association of the Southern Tier.
Good evening, and thank you for this opportunity. Also to the council, thank you for your time and service and dedication to this issue. Just for background, our association represents manufacturers who produce $4.5 billion in annual shipments in the Southern Tier. Obviously, manufacturing is an extremely important component of our regional economy. Scientific-based facts tell us that as a nation and as a world, we must collectively take immediate action to combat global warming by reducing carbon emissions. As we take action in reducing carbon emissions here in New York, we must make sure we take into account consumer demand through the lens of both economic and workforce development. It's imperative that as we set and work toward carbon emission goals, we must find solutions that balance both economic and environmental sustainability and establish goals that recognize affordability, so that our businesses can compete and our citizens want to stay in New York, and that the goals take into account the reliability and resiliency in both production and distribution of energy. Manufacturers in the United States perform 58% of all private sector research and development in the nation. We drive more innovation than any other sector. We ask that New York State work with us to meet the objectives of this effort. Every manufacturer in our region and the employees in those companies are innovation centers. Bring us into the process in a meaningful way. In addition, we ask that New York State extend this public comment period to allow further input from businesses and citizens. We ask that New York State reconsider the timeline. It's not realistic. The unintended consequences of the timeline as proposed is that businesses will forego pending and future investments in their companies, and employees may move out of the state.
Thank you for your comments. Sebastian?
Kyle Toth, Council Representative, Eastern Millwrights Regional Council. My name's Kyle Toth. I'm a member of the Eastern Millwrights Regional Council. I grew up in Oswego County, recently moved out to Erie County about five years ago. I grew up looking at, living near, and my friends and family near three nuclear power plants, also worked inside of them. I can advocate for the safe and reliable energy those plants produce. Upstate New York's nuclear power plants provide reliable, carbon-free electricity 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. Continued investment in nuclear power in conjunction with other carbon-free electrical generation is necessary to achieve our governmental goals and increased electrical demands. Upstate New York's nuclear power generation is proven technology with more than 60 years of safe, reliable service, providing approximately 3,300 megawatts of power and 42% of New York's existing carbon-free electrical generation. Without New York's three upstate nuclear facilities, carbon emissions would increase by nearly 16 tons annually, in addition to an annual increase of 650,000 tons of nitrous oxide and over 1 million tons of sulfur oxide due to high dependence on power plants and pollute. Over the course of my building trades career, I've advocated for and worked in construction with several wind and solar farms and hydroelectric plants throughout New York State. Unfortunately, wind and solar resources are intermittent and face community-sighting challenges. The future of renewables is highly dependent on transmission of evolving technologies, improvement regarding energy storage, and technology still in dissonancy. Another surprising hurdle is convincing towns and communities accept the permit of wind, solar, and hydroelectric facilities in their, in their communities. We cannot afford to lose upstate nuclear energy stations, dependable source of clean electrical generation, and association economic benefits for New York State's economy. Maintaining carbon-free nuclear plants will be essential to meeting the emissions-reducing goals at the lowest cost to consumers. Thank you.
Thank you. Caroline?
Julie Ksenza, International Representative, IBW. Hello, my name is Julie Ksenza. I'm a representative with the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers, a New York State taxpayer and a national fuel gas customer. As a New York State taxpayer and national fuel customer, I have major concerns under the CLCPA about the increased cost to convert homes and businesses from natural gas to electric energy. The estimates show a cost between $20,000 and $50,000 for a single-family home. I'm not sure how many people are aware of these figures, nor is there any information on who and how these costs will be paid. Exact information and costing should be provided to taxpayers and ratepayers prior to any changes being made under the CLCPA. As an IBW representative under the CLCPA, the proposed gas ban will have an unfortunate impact on good jobs in the utility industry. These are union jobs with good wages, benefits, and safe working conditions. If these jobs are lost, there will be a far-reaching impact on the lives of our members and the communities where they live. The ripple effect of job loss has a long-lasting negative impact, as seen in any closed coal or nuclear plant community. The CLCPA has the potential to create significant economic revitalization in New York State if managed properly. The economy change must maintain existing quality jobs, promote new supply chain jobs, and result, and result in significant new clean energy, green jobs in New York State realizes a net-plus jobs outcome. Dormant power plants, industrial sites, and environmental disturbed sites are primed for clean energy development and new job creation. It is smart growth and a win-win for the local community and the state to consider. An added benefit is these sites could have existing electrical infrastructure already present. Aggressive build-out of the transmission and distribution system must be a priority. If we do not get the transmission and distribution system right, it will impact the ability to build out a renewable energy, transform our transportation infrastructure from fossil fuel to electric.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Sebastian?
David Kozlowski, Manager of Regional Operations, New York State Electric and Gas, Rochester Gas and Electric.
NYSAG and RG&E provide electric and gas to nearly 1.9 million customers in every region of upstate New York. Our infrastructure includes 49,400 miles of electric distribution and transmission lines, enough to circle the globe twice. We also have more than 17,000 miles of natural gas distribution and transmission pipelines. We fully support and embrace the state's greenhouse gas emissions reduction goals, and we are committed to working with the Climate Action Council as the state's energy system goes, undergoes, or transformation while ensuring that the energy needed by our customers is safe, reliable, and affordable. An example of this commitment here in Western New York is our first-of-a-kind Java microgrid project. This project in our Lancaster division will test a microgrid solution using battery storage to provide capacity to a substation serving 1,700 customers. We are also working with the City of Ithaca to implement its nation-leading Green New Deal goal to decarbonize the city by 2030 and to collect data from our peak shaving battery storage system pilot in Farmington. Achieving the state's energy and climate goals and providing New Yorkers with the utility service they expect and deserve will require a collective approach. As part of this transition, we will need to use and upgrade our existing electric infrastructure to help ensure reliability and to transmit renewable generation. We will also need to explore potential future uses of our natural gas infrastructure in the delivery of low- and no-carbon renewable gas and hydrogen. To be successful, all options need to be on the table. The state must plan for the vital investments that will be needed to meet demand and renewable generation goals across its diverse regions. Determining affordable approaches that ensure safety and reliability for New Yorkers living in very different communities and climates is an important step in this transition. As the state moves forward with its historic transformation, NYSAG and RG&E stand ready to assist in achieving emissions reduction and renewable energy goals. Thank you.
Thank you. Caroline?
Brian Smith, Associate Executive Director, Citizens Campaign for the Environment.
On behalf of Citizens Campaign for the Environment, many thanks to the council for your tireless work to put this plan together. I want to touch on a few of our priority issues today, although we'll be submitting more extensive written comments. First, on the issue of electricity production, it's imperative that we achieve our goals of 70% renewable energy by 2030 and a carbon-free grid by 2040. Therefore, we must ensure that we are holding ourselves accountable every step of the way. We need annual targets for bringing new renewable energy and battery storage online, while also setting an aggressive schedule to phase out dirty fossil fuel power plants with prioritization given to overburdened disadvantaged communities. Second, we'll not meet our renewable energy goals without offshore wind. Not only will New York meet its goal of 9 gigawatts by 2035, we'll need to significantly expand on this in order to meet our 2040 goal of a carbon-free grid. Estimates show we'll need as much as 25 gigawatts. New York must continue to support growth of the offshore wind industry in the, in the Byte Downstate, and we also must strongly consider the contribution that the vast potential of offshore wind in the Great Lakes can help provide. Of course, any wind power in the Great Lakes should be responsibly cited with rigorous environmental review to ensure that wind development supports the health of the Great Lakes and its many uses. Third, we need to meet our clean energy goals, and we'll need to require strong public support. New York State should implement a robust public education campaign that provides accurate, fact-based information to the public on renewable energy. On the topic of, of waste, it is imperative that New York address the significant greenhouse gases from the waste sector. This includes both waste disposal, as well as reducing waste at its, waste at its source. We must address the significant emissions from the solid waste sector by holding corporate manufacturers responsible for managing their products throughout their entire life cycle through a policy known as Extended Produce Responsibility, or EPR. New York should adopt strong EPR policies for product, packaging, and paper, carpets, mattresses, household appliances, all batteries, and other hard recycle items that are contributing to the solid waste and climate crisis. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sebastian?
Kristin Van Horwidge, Climate Solutions Accelerator.
Thank you. I am proud to live in New York State where we have such ambitious and comprehensive climate legislation, and the promise and possibility of the CLCPA should be applauded and celebrated. However, my biggest concern is ensuring the spirit and the intention of the law are maintained and that there is adequate funding to reach a net-zero economy by 2050. Failing to invest in climate solutions will leave local communities hamstrung rather than empowered by the law. We need to adopt an equity-focused carbon pricing mechanism. Furthermore, to ensure we achieve an equitable transition to clean energy means we must follow the recommendations of the Climate Justice Working Group and not succumb to the pretenses of false solutions. Continued investment in false solutions that extend our reliance on fossil fuel infrastructure and continue to burden low-income communities and communities of color with the health, environmental, and economic costs of this infrastructure fails, both in terms of community protection and climate leadership. In the City of Rochester, over 50% of residents rent, and the poverty rate is above 30%. The current scoping plan fails to adequately address the problem of the split incentive and does not provide adequate protection for renters or support landlords with the necessary means to create healthy, comfortable, and affordable housing for all New Yorkers. The state must put in place stronger regulations on investor-owned utilities to reduce emissions while ensuring ratepayers have access to affordable clean energy. Finally, in the Genesee Finger Lakes, agricultural production primarily, primarily from large farms is a major contributor to our regional emissions. The state must invest in creating sustainable farming systems and infrastructure through additional funding and resources to enable farmers to adopt soil health practices, organic, regenerative agriculture, and incentivize value-based procurement measures that prioritize local economy, sustainability, and worker safety. Thank you.
Thank you. Caroline?
Trevor Went, Vice President, Wentz Propane and Oil.
Hi, good afternoon. My name's Trevor Went from Wentz Propane and Oil. I'm also representing the New York Propane Gas Association on this matter. Wentz Propane and Oil, we've been in business since 1967. We have a location in Sanborn, New York, as well as Leroy, New York, and we employ about 16 men and women. Climate change is a threat, and it's everyone's responsibility to do what they can to mitigate and address its effects. It's important to ground our efforts in solutions that are real and attainable. The propane industry is investing in solutions that can make a difference, such as renewable propane. The success of the draft scoping plan relies heavily on inflated benefits and underestimated costs. For instance, the plan banks on dramatic changes in human behavior, attributing $39.5 billion in healthcare savings to people walking and biking more. It also assumes $235 billion in savings by avoiding climate change impacts, but this ignores the fact that the carbon emissions are a global problem. New York State produces less than 1/2% of all carbon emissions. Meaningful change can only be achieved with a global response. However, the most significant oversight of the Climate Action Council's plan is that it fails to seriously address grid reliability issues. Our electric grid is aging and is already subjected to frequent outages. To push a, I'm sorry, a push to electrify everything without first making major investments to upgrade and prepare the grid for higher loads isn't just shortsighted, it's dangerous. You can't squeeze the flow of the Niagara River into a four-inch pipe, and you can't electrify everything on our current grid. Grid reliability is a matter of public safety. Whether it's scorching temperatures during the summer or freezing conditions in the winter, outages can be life-threatening. Higher costs, fewer choices, and less reliability. This is the future that New Yorkers face, and the plan is followed, is submitted. Propane is a flexible, is a flexible and dependable with a low-carbon footprint and is an EPA-designated certified clean fuel with a low-carbon content. It can and should be part of the state's long-term sustainability plans. Thank you.
Thank you. Could we have the next seven and eight? Nine and 10? Seven and eight, please. Thank you. Sebastian?
Terry Cruz, Managing Director, Energy Transition Technology, National Fuel.
Good afternoon. My name is Terry Cruz, a lifelong resident of Buffalo, New York, and an employee with National Fuel Gas for more than 38 years. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. As an electrical engineer and long-term energy and industry employee, I know it is far too early to take any energy source off the table for consideration. A balance-all-of-the-above approach can realistically achieve emission reduction goals by utilizing all energy sources, including existing underground reliable natural gas infrastructure that includes low-carbon fuels when wind and solar and batteries are unavailable, which is conservatively estimated at over 50% of the time. I want to highlight not only the many environmental benefits of natural gas and other emerging lower-carbon fuels, but also call attention to the accelerated efforts and initiatives mine and my industry peers are taking to help address climate change. From implementing innovative technologies that will continue to drive down greenhouse gas emissions to supporting the growth of renewable natural gas and research into alternative fuels such as hydrogen, National Fuel is committed to working together with New York to reaching net-zero greenhouse gas emissions from our valuable, existing, reliable, and efficient assets by 2050. Real, unbiased data shows that natural gas has already been instrumental in helping our nation and world meet climate goals by reducing CO2 emissions. For example, between 25 and 2019, US electricity gas-based generation increased by almost 2%, while related CO2 emissions fell by 33%. As climate discussions evolve, it's critical that policymakers understand that natural gas and its related infrastructure will be a critical part of contributing to our cleaner energy future. Me, my company, and my energy industry peers stand ready, willing, and able to cooperatively work with New York on an improved climate action plan for all. Thanks for your attention.
Thank you. Caroline, hang, Caroline, hang on for a second. Could I just ask, I can hear whispers and, and talk, and that's fine, but if you would take that out into the lobby, please? Here, we want to pay attention to what each other's saying. Caroline, you're up.
Chris Austin, Carpenters Union, Local 276.
Good afternoon. My name is Chris Austin, the Western New York Business Manager for the North Atlantic State's Regional Council of Carpenters, Local 276. We cover the 12 counties of Western New York and help to employ 2,000 Western New York carpenters. I am appearing today to express the carpenters' utmost support for the New York's upstate nuclear facilities, including the current language in the Climate Action Council's draft decarbonization scoping plan that affirms nuclear generation provides a significant amount of state's carbon-free baseload energy that will be needed well into the future. New York is a national leader in advancing innovative climate policy, and we are pleased to see upstate New York energy continue to play a vital role in reaching the state's climate goals. Upstate New York's safe, reliable, and exceptionally maintained nuclear power stations produce 44% of the state's emission-free electricity and are instrumental in achieving the state's decarbonization goals. The units operate 24/7, 365 days, and have national-leading capacity factors of approximately 95%. In addition to the undeniable reliability and environmental attributes, the upstate nuclear facilities provide thousands of jobs and millions of taxes that are critical to the upstate economy and local communities. Included in the council's draft scoping plan is a decarbonization implementation cost-benefit analysis completed by analysis completed by NISERTA. The analysis assumes that the upstate nuclear power stations continue to operate 20-year license extensions. If the upstate nuclear fleet is not relicensed for an additional 20 years, NISERTA's analysis identifies additional cost of approximately $9.8 billion to achieve the state's decarbonization goals. As documented in the plan, maintaining New York's existing nuclear power stations is the most economical way to reach the state's decarbonization goals. The draft plan is also recommends the Public Service Commission, PSC, review of existing zero-emission credit program for potential extension beyond the current expiration of 2029.
Thank you for your comments. Sebastian?
Mr. Dana Elwood, Rochester Gas and Electric.
Hi, as stated, Dana Elwood, RG&E. I work on the gas side. We do have union brothers and sisters from the electric side. I want to talk to everybody here, just not the people up here.
Please, please, please address your comments to the council. Thank you.
Okay, well, there's people here. I'm from the gas side. We work on gas, we fix the gas leaks, we install services. We have people here that work with me on the electric side. They'll tell you what this will do. If you try to heat your house and charge your cars, what that will do to the system. That's why there's burnouts already, and this hasn't even started. I think somebody ought to step back, take a real look at things. When you guys go home, the heat's on, that's because you're probably heating with gas. I'll make this short and sweet. Maybe instead of listening to politicians and people in suit and ties, talk to the people who are working with their hands and up that pole when there's a storm, get your electric back on, or in the ditch, making sure you're safe with the gas. All right, thanks.
Thank you for your comment. Caroline?
John Kevert, Climate Solutions Accelerator, Rochester.
My name is John Kevert. I live in Rochester, New York, and I'm here because of both fear and hope. My fear is that if we don't deal responsibly with the looming climate crisis, my three-year-old granddaughter, who could well be alive at New Year 2100, will face a very hostile world. My hope is that we will fully implement the groundbreaking CLCPA. Climate change isn't waiting for us. Seize the opportunity that exists when funding the necessary transition whereby our actions can create, can both arrest climate change and also deal with the concurrent crises of racism and mass inequality. Implementing CLCPA will create hundreds of thousands of new jobs. Please require that these be good, green jobs with priority given to previously unemployed and residents of disadvantaged communities. Enforce that 40% of the money gets spent in those communities that suffer the most and have done the least to cause global warming. Science tells us we must reduce greenhouse gas emissions by 50% by 2030. A shift to renewable power generation is occurring, but not nearly fast enough. Please demand $10 billion per year in new climate funding to incentivize and accelerate the shift to renewable energy and energy-efficient buildings. The cost of business as usual is much greater. An NISERTA study shows that dealing with climate change saves at least $90 billion by 2050. We will avoid both future climate disasters as well as health costs caused by air pollution from burning fossil fuels. Maximum benefit comes from aggressively shifting away from any combustion involving carbon. That means no renewable natural gas. Avoid industry's false solutions like biogas that is fed into the gas pipelines merely to justify their extended use. Oppose national grid and national fuel gas greed. Use your power to improve our lives, not corporate profits. Thank you.
Thank you. Sebastian?
Jim Anderson, statewide Vice President, Citizen Action of New York and President of Push Buffalo.
You're the Climate Action Council, not the Climate inaction Council. You know why you're here. We know why you're here. As the leader of an organization with tens of thousands of members statewide, our members, like 63% of the residents of New York, believe much more must be done to combat climate change. We, not the defenders of the gas industry attending today, represent the majority of New Yorkers. The doubt peddlers, the hyped-up false solutions, and the outright lies from the gas industry should be resisted. The draft scoping plan moves in the right direction, but we must go further. I want to emphasize that Citizen Action supports the five key New York renewed principles for the final scoping plan. First, environmental justice must come first. Buffalo, like so many cities, has neighborhoods that have been disproportionately impacted by fossil fuel facilities. Nearby, in the town of Tandawanda, Tandawanda Coke Plant, residents of the communities and workers in that area have suffered respiratory and other illnesses due to benzene high levels from the plant. We need the scoping plan to ensure that all state facilities and industries run on clean energy rather than fossil fuels in the state to contribute to addressing climate change, not to exacerbate the problem. Secondly, we should not permit false solutions like waste incineration. The state must be more demonstrative in notifying communities on existing and emerging contaminants. Third, we must come up with a dedicated funding mechanism for climate transformation. Fourth, we support the third of the three scenarios in the drafting plan. The fifth New York renewed principle is particularly critical. The final plan must include timelines for reduction of greenhouse gas emissions by industry sector that achieve the launch target in our recommendations of action.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you for your comments. Caroline?
Gerald D., Council Representative, NERC-C Carpenters Union.
My name is Jerry D. I live in Rochester, New York, and I'm a member of Carpenters Union Local 276. I want to express my support for New York's nuclear power facilities and the Climate Action Council's draft scoping plan. As one of New York's largest employers, nuclear power provides 25,000 direct and indirect jobs. We cannot afford to lose the reliable source of clean, carbon-free energy nuclear power provides, and we cannot afford to lose the economic driver that clean energy provides. I speak from personal experience, having worked at Gannay, Nine Mile One, Nine Mile Two, and Fitzpatrick Nuclear Power Plants. I have never worked in a safer, in a more safe, more professional environment. The 15,000 union carpenters of New York State support the 20-year extension of the operating licenses of New York's nuclear power stations. Thank you.
Thank you. Sebastian?
Ralph Galanti, Dispatcher, National Fuel Gas.
Hello. My name is Ralph Galanti. As stated, I work currently as a dispatcher at National Fuel, but I'm also a retired fire chief from the city of Lackawanna. One of my biggest concerns is how the residents of a city such as Lackawanna with an older housing stock and with 25% living below the poverty line can afford an estimated $20,000 to $50,000 to convert these homes from natural gas to all-electric. Also, the unreliability of the electrical grid during storms. With natural gas being 94% of all energy being used during the coldest days in Western New York, what happens when we no longer have gas and the electrical grid fails? These are life-threatening situations. Finally, many houses in older cities have smaller lots with limited or no parking near the houses, as well as having alternate parking laws on the streets. If we go to all-electric vehicles, how are these vehicles going to be charged? Thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to share my views.
Thank you. Caroline?
Kaitlin McCormick, Director, Renewable Development, Invenergy.
Good afternoon. My name is Kaitlin McCormick, and I am here today to speak on behalf of Invenergy, where I serve as Director of Renewable Development located in our Orchard Park, New York office. Prior to joining the team at Invenergy, I spent 16 years working as an environmental consultant, supporting the permitting of energy and infrastructure projects. For those who aren't familiar with us, Invenergy is among the largest developer, owner, and operators of renewable energy solutions globally. I am here today to affirm Invenergy's strong support of the Climate Action Council draft scoping plan, including the strategies focused on the electricity sector. Invenergy has five operating projects in New York. Locally, we operate the Sheldon and Orangeville Wind Farms in Wyoming County. We also have over 20 development projects in the pipeline in New York State spanning wind, solar, and storage technologies. This pipeline represents over 2 gigawatts of American-made clean power that Invenergy stands ready to deliver. These projects also represent countless jobs and millions in local economic investment in the communities that host our projects. We are and will continue to be an employer and community partner in New York. To achieve New York's 70% renewable by 2030 mandate, the state must advance a significant pipeline of renewable energy projects into the construction phase and overcome barriers to renewable project development. We applaud the state on the progress already being made toward the 70% goal. New York must continue to optimize the process for the siting of renewable energy projects in an efficient and environmentally responsible manner across the Empire State. Projects that have recently begun construction or operation and those in the queue will help communities across the state be part of the climate solution while creating well-paying jobs and realizing key economic and social benefits. We strongly encourage New York to continue its procurement efforts to maintain momentum and investment in renewable energy and its associated local and regional benefits to communities across the state. In conclusion, Invenergy is here today to express our strong support of the Climate Action Council draft scoping plan. Thank you for the opportunity to comment.
Thank you. Sebastian?
Andrew Thomas Byter, Executive Director, the Academy for Human Rights.
Good evening, everyone. I'm here today as the only educator in our audience tonight, so I think I have a unique angle that approaches this issue and allows the spirit of the law to move forward. The Academy for Human Rights is a local nonprofit here in Buffalo that's been around for 15 years. Three years ago, we held the nation's first interdisciplinary conference that trained 150 English, Social Studies, and STEM educators to learn more about the problem, the most crucial problem of our time and its solutions. I'm here today to implore you to go back to Albany, to demand teacher training and money that funds this, the spirit of this law that we can't act upon fast enough. Now, let me give you some concrete examples. I assume you're all New Yorkers. We're all here. We all struggled through the region's exams. In the past region's exams, in Social Studies, there's not one mention of climate. What you put in a teacher is what you will get out of society. We need a master, a cadre of master teachers traveling around the state, implementing a curriculum that represents the many compelling voices in here, but keeps the spirit of this law alive and pushes everyone to a sustainable future. What you put in a teacher is what you will get out of society. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you. Caroline?
Michael Wentz, Lockport, New York.
Good afternoon, and thank you for this opportunity. I wanted to say that climate change is the single biggest crisis looming over everyone right now. We need to take drastic changes now to ensure that millions of people, especially working-class people, don't suffer the impending climate catastrophe. New York's climate action plan is a good start to it. There is more work to be done if we want to ensure our future. We need to begin transitioning away from fossil fuel infrastructure, beginning with the immediate halting of new construction projects. We need to stop giving these polluters tax breaks. The money that we pay in taxes needs to be invested into our own communities and not to line the pockets of the fossil fuel industry. We also need to make sure that state funding for climate action is a generational project. The youngest of us today will be dealing with the brunt of the climate catastrophe. The scoping plan needs to invest in green infrastructure such as electric buses, oops, sorry, and charging stations, and offer financial support to people to accelerate the transition to electric homes and vehicles. In addition, the Climate Action Council should steer clear of unfounded energy sources such as so-called green hydrogen and renewable natural gas. Until these fuel sources are given a rigorous review on the lines of climate, safety, and public health, we must be wary of them and keep them off the table. The time to act is now. Together, we are stronger, and we can make a difference for the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Sebastian?
Christopher Stone, Council Representative, North Atlantic State's Regional Council of Carpenters Local 276.
Thank you very much of Climate Action Committee for affording me time to speak this evening. My name is Chris Stone. I'm President of Carpenters Local 276, representing over 2,100 members locally. I wish to state the carpenters' earnest support for upstate New York's nuclear power plants and the Climate Action Council's decarbonization scoping plan. This plan reaffirms that the baseload energy provided by nuclear power will be needed for an orderly transition to new renewable energy sources. The New York Public Service Commission's Clean Energy Standard adopted a zero emissions credit, or ZEC, specifically for nuclear power. The zero emissions credit helps to support New York's nuclear power plants. New York's four nuclear power plants account for over 31% of the state's total electric generation. That's 31% clean power. According to the PSC, losing the carbon-free attributes of this generation before the development of new renewable sources between now and 2040 would result in significantly increased air emissions and pollution due to heavier reliance on fossil fuel plants and the probable construction of new gas plants to replace the supplanted nuclear energy. New York State's nuclear plants provide the needed bridge to renewable energy. That's an emissions-free bridge to the future. If our nuclear power plants are not relicensed, NISERTA estimates an added consumer burdens of $9.8 billion to meet the decarbonization goals, not to mention the loss of good-paying jobs and the economic multipliers it brings to the upstate economy. The United Brotherhood of Carpenters thanks New York State for establishing the zero emissions credit for nuclear power. We also thank the Climate Action Council's recognition of nuclear power's clean energy role in the smooth transition to renewables. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Caroline?
Nicole Masaki, NYIRG.
Hi. NiPerg strongly supports the CAC drafting, draft scoping plan recommendation on page 124 that states that the state should act through legislation in 2022, a building code for highly efficient all-electric new construction. The All-Electric Building Act embodies this recommendation and is supported by 217 national, statewide, and regional organizations. The passage of the All-Electric Building Act would make New York the first state to end fossil fuel use in new building construction. New buildings would rely on heat pumps for heating, cooling, and hot water and greater energy efficiencies. Heat pumps do not combust fossil fuels. They are highly efficient and electric-powered, and this electricity is increasingly powered by wind, solar, and other renewable sources. Such reliance on electricity to provide the necessary power for new buildings is not unheard of. Everything from deeply affordable housing to skyscrapers are being built fossil-free. Furthermore, a New York City study and NISERTA data confirms non-fossil fuel-powered clean buildings do not cost more. The bill prohibits cities, towns, or villages from issuing permits to the construction of any new gas-fueled commercial or residential building starting on January 1, 2024. The bill also prohibits any permits, convert, structure to a mixed-fuel building or project. Lastly, the bill directs the Department of Public Service, the Division of Housing and Community Renewal, and the Department of State and the Energy Research and Development Authority to report jointly to the governor and legislature by February 1, 2023, to assess and recommend electric rate design or policy changes needed to ensure this law does not diminish affordable housing production or affordability of electricity for consumers in all-electric buildings. The timetable for this legislation moves the state forward in meeting the goals of the CLCPA. It also matches New York City's electric buildings law starting in 2024. Thank you.
Thank you. Sebastian?
Haley Farrington, Community Relations Manager, EDF Renewables.
Thank you. As a member organization of Alliance for Clean Energy in New York and an active stakeholder in the New York solar development industry, EDF Renewables is supportive of the actions taken and directions provided by the Climate Action Committee's draft scoping plan. With four solar energy projects currently contracted through NISERTA for a total of 480 megawatts, EDFR is honored to be meaningfully adding to the state's clean energy workforce. The contracted projects will employ over 650 full-time equivalent prevailing wage jobs during the construction phases and create at least 10 full-time equivalent positions throughout the operational phases. As a company, we strive to develop this workforce here in New York State through partnerships and programming with host community schools, higher education institutions, county workforce programs, and union groups. In addition, solar projects in our communities will help strengthen local economies, stabilize farmer cash flows, and provide new opportunities for hospitality, goods and services sectors, and for co-locating farming practices and PV arrays. Realizing these solar projects are crucial to the state achieving its clean energy production targets, we're honored to be a part of this critical and landmark transition. EDF Renewables looks forward to contributing more than 1.5 gigawatts of additional solar projects and over 1,900 prevailing wage jobs across the state within the guidelines proposed by the Climate Action Committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Caroline?
Michelle Kingdollar, Western New York Energy LLC.
Good afternoon. I appreciate the opportunity to provide comments to the Climate and Action Council on behalf of Western New York Energy in Medina. Western New York Energy works with New York farmers by purchasing local corn and producing bioethanol from a natural fermentation, zero-waste process. All pieces of the corn kernel are used to produce bioethanol and also high-quality feed products such as dairy distillers. bioethanol from a natural fermentation, zero-waste process. All pieces of the corn kernel are used to produce bioethanol and also high-quality feed products such as dairy distillers' grains and feed-grade corn oil, in addition to capturing CO2, which is sold as food grade. As a large utility customer in New York, energy-related costs that Western New York Energy pays are already amongst the highest in our industry across the United States. Western New York Energy requests that before any recommendations in the final scoping plan can be finalized, a detailed analysis be undertaken to assess and minimize compliance costs on industry and businesses to prevent unwanted and unanticipated economic impacts. Otherwise, Climate Act implementation will have the high likelihood of driving even more industries and well-paying jobs out of New York State. While we are supportive of the Climate Act goals, Western New York Energy is concerned about the unknown impacts of compliance on the overall cost and reliability of energy supplies in New York State. Protecting the reliability and controlling costs of natural gas for consumers who rely on it without currently viable alternatives needs to be a priority in the formulation of the final recommendations. We ask that you consider an all-of-the-above approach in reducing carbon base, based on the contribution to clean energy, not just focus on electrification. Thank you.
Thank you. Could we have Groups 9 and 10, please? And I just want to remind everyone, we are going to be stopping at 6:40. So if your comment doesn't get heard tonight, you can send it by, there's an online comment form at climate.ny.gov. Sebastian?
Gary Beckett, Vice President, RM Headley Valves and Controls.
So before I get started, free speech and sharing of ideas. This is wonderful. So, hands out to everybody on this. My name is Gary Beckett. I have been a supplier to National Fuel Gas, selling, installing, servicing, and commissioning industrial equipment for almost 40 years. I'm an authority on correct, safe application of products for use in producing, transporting, storing, and distributing natural gas.
Mr. Bennett, could you hold for a moment?
Absolutely.
Gentlemen in the back, could you, gentlemen? Thank you. Forgive me.
No, no. Forgive me. Forgive me. 100% of my focus when working is attention to detail on meeting or exceeding specifications such as valve or pressure vessel, wall thickness, pressure class, material compatibility, corrosion, seat leakage, emissions, performance, and long life. In applications requiring noise reduction, we provide silencers that sometimes include a special metal called a catalyst that promotes a chemical reaction to reduce CO2. There are many state and federal organizations that guide equipment selection, such as ASME, ANSI, NACE, MSS, API, FM, DOT, FERC, and many others. All of these agencies has the ultimate objective of meeting purpose in a correct, safe manner. For the last several years, I've been working with National Fuel to lower and/or eliminate gas leakage. This proactive approach has resulted in new valve, stem, and seat sealing designs that have now passed third-party testing, achieving fugitive emission certifications. If you would allow me to make one last comment, to put an eight-year timeline on 100% electric homes before green energy is proven, to me seems not prudent. Why don't we implement 95% efficient home gas furnaces installed by this date until other energies are ready? Thank you.
Thank you. Caroline?
Denistie Pietro, Security Specialist, National Fuel.
Hello. My name is Denistie Pietro. I lived in Buffalo for the last 10 years, eight of them working at National Fuel. I'm here today with some concerns and questions regarding the draft scoping plan released by the state's Climate Action Council for achieving the law's emission targets. I recognize the need for clean energy and the importance of reducing emissions. However, this can be accomplished in many ways, including energy sources such as renewable natural gas and hydrogen, which can be transported by the natural gas pipeline, which already exists across the state. In fact, National Fuel has stated repeatedly that it has a pathway to not merely meet, but exceed the 2019 Climate Action Carbon Emission Reduction thresholds. The natural gas ban is not even necessary to achieve the emission reduction targets. We can all agree that emissions and should be reduced. National Fuel has reduced its delivery system's greenhouse gas emissions by 64% since 1990. We are also promoting greater efficiency and educating our customers on how they can make a real difference. With the cost of $20,000 to $50,000 to convert a single-family home from natural gas to electric energy, how is this being paid for? The median household income is $56,822 in Buffalo. With being the third poorest city in the nation, this wouldn't be affordable to most residents here. Will this be reliable and affordable? Western New York is already 56% colder compared to downstate. Can this council guarantee during a normal winter season that electric energy can sustain and supply the people of Western New York with adequate heating? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Sebastian?
Eric Zeiss, Systems Engineer, Metro Justice.
Thank you very much for considering all of our comments. Every time I talk with relatives on the West Coast, I feel their fear of wildfires that are being dramatically inflamed by climate change caused by fossil fuel combustion. Every day, I see yet another reframed or half-truth or false solution created by well-funded think tanks to buy our convictions in order to uphold the profit margins and executive salaries of the fossil fuel industry. Please support the focus of the scoping plan recommendations that can greatly reduce and then eliminate natural gas use and infrastructure while maintaining reliability and affordability. Please support incentives to homeowners to equitably replace their gas furnaces and appliances with their clean and electric counterparts before they wear out. Please support the scoping plan recommendations to zero out emissions from electricity generation by 2040 while maintaining reliability and equitable affordability. Please demand $10 billion per year in new funding to incentivize and accelerate the shift to equitable renewable power and energy-efficient buildings. The cost of business as usual is much greater, as shown by NYSERDA. We can mitigate, and we can mitigate both future climate disasters and health costs from the pollution and changing climate caused by fossil fuel combustion by aggressively shifting away from any combustion of fossil fuels. Please support the creation of the many thousands of clean energy jobs that are transitioned to clean energy, clean renewable sources of energy we'll demand. Seize this opportunity to provide a livable future for our children and grandchildren. I strongly support Scenario 3. I save 30% on my utility bill by using heat pumps instead of natural gas with a 98% efficient furnace, and I recommend reading the book Electrify by Saul Griffiths. Thank you.
Thank you. Caroline?
Judy Fitzgerald, Interfaith Climate Justice Community.
I will begin with a quote from U.N. Secretary-General Antonio Guterres. Do we have a choice? Fossil fuels are a dead end for our planet, for humanity, and, yes, for our economies. Could he say it more directly? Can we hear him? We are now at a point of no return. We either now act now or condemn ourselves to a world we won't recognize. I am proud to come and support New York State's climate scoping plan. I applaud their forward thinking and their hard work involved in producing steps that can help to mitigate the worst effects of climate change. New York State sets itself up as a model for the rest of the country to follow. The catch to me is this: Will we follow the timelines set up? And if we don't, it is clear we will not reach our goals, law or no law. Without sticking to those timelines, we will not make it, and that would be a tragedy. Electricity by 2050, our electricity needs will double. New York must never build another fossil fuel plant, and it must get rid of the aging fossil fuel plants, replacing them with renewable energy, battery storage, geothermal inefficiency. Transportation: New York's climate law requires 100% emission-neutral state by 2050 with 100% emission-free electricity by 2040. It sets bold targets. 35% to 40% of state resources used in transition must benefit disadvantaged communities. This is key from a social justice perspective, which cannot be ignored and must be included. We have a plan. We must follow achievable targeted goals realized by sticking to the planned time schedule. The Interfaith Climate Justice Community works together to save this beautiful earth gifted to us by God. If we do not act now, we will lose it, and not only for ourselves. I am the grandmother of three happy, healthy boys, and I will not stand by and watch this abundant state destroyed, nor my country.
Thank you for your comments.
Nor the earth.
Sebastian?
Jennifer Brinkworth, Registered Nurse, New York State Nurses Association.
Good evening, everyone. I am an active, I am an active member in my union, the New York State Nurses Association. As nurses on the forefront of patient care, we have seen up close the horrors of the COVID-19 pandemic. We know that this is just a preview of what lies ahead if we do not take climate change seriously. In fact, the destruction from climate change and environmental degradation has already had its effect on the health of our patients. Increases in heat have contributed to cardiac issues. Pollutants are being discharged into our city air, causing a steady increase in chronic asthmatic conditions in most of our vulnerable communities. In addition, these communities also face environmental injustices like contaminated water supplies and tainted soil. They are also the ones that are usually hit the hardest by catastrophic, catastrophic weather-related events. We should be doing everything that we can to do to get at 100% fossil fuel-free economy. We also need to make sure that we are doing this in an equitable way. This includes special attention to the fact that environmental justice communities must be prioritized. Additionally, workers must be transitioned into good, green jobs. As a strong labor union that believes in fairness and equity, NYSNA will always advocate for workers to be treated with dignity and respect. The scoping plan does not adequately address how we are going to support our displaced workers. The CAC must recommend that a worker and community assurance fund is created. This would provide support to fossil fuel-dependent workers as well as to the communities who rely on fossil fuel-dependent industries. The state should provide direct funding for training, workforce development, apprenticeship, and pre-apprenticeship programs across sectors. We want to be...
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Caroline?
Merle E. Showers, Reverend, Interfaith Climate Justice Community.
Because global warming is real and the effects of climate change are becoming so obvious, even to those who once denied it, and because these effects are causing harm to those most vulnerable and who did the least to cause this harm, it is critical that New York State acts and acts now. The Climate Leadership and Protection, Community Protection Act is law, but if we do not make specific deadlines for when specific things must be changed, and if we do not put adequate funding in New York State budget to accomplish these change, the law will be meaningless. Also, those specific deadlines are not set for, are not set for the earliest possible dates. The goals will not be reached, and even greater damage will be done if they are not set more early. Therefore, each of the scoping sectors must not be vaguely written, but must state dates and measurable outcomes when each step of the transition will occur. The plan must state clearly what an agency or legislative body must determine the resources needed to accomplish the goal and by when. There will always be delays, so the plan must compensate for those delays with even earlier deadlines. Because the effects of climate change will not greatly, will most greatly affect the most vulnerable in our state, this scoping plan will need to include specific ways New York State will help the most vulnerable to have their homes retrofitted and how they will acquire electric vehicles and access to inexpensive charging stations. The scoping plan must also state how trees and vegetation will be planted and cared for in neighborhoods of the most vulnerable. Thank you.
Thank you. Sebastian?
Robert Sieszewski, Sierra Club.
Thank you. Thank you all. I am Bob Sieszewski, Chair of the Sierra Club Atlantic Chapter's Energy Committee. We need your council to recommend strong regulations to implement the goals of New York's CLCPA with overwhelming, which passed into law with overwhelming legislative support. On April 4, the United Nations Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change issued a report stating that in order to keep global warming below a dangerous increase of 2.7 degrees Fahrenheit, we must halt increases in greenhouse gases, emissions of carbon dioxide, and methane within three years, which is 2025. It will also be necessary to reduce worldwide emissions by 43% by the year 2030, and the IPCC also found we already have the technology necessary to achieve these goals. 2030 is the same year that the CLCPA mandates a 40% reduction in greenhouse gases in New York State below 1990 levels. This goal can only be accomplished by serious efforts to build out renewable energy sources of solar and wind power in the electric sector, to increase the infrastructure and improve transmission lines, to greatly increase the use of electric cars and buses, and to begin heating our homes and buildings with electric air-to-air or geothermal heat pumps. There have been running, many recommendations provided by your working groups and panels to implement strong climate measures to, to replace methane, gas, and nuclear. Many of these suggestions should be adopted. It's also important to avoid false solutions, false energy solutions such as wasting renewable electricity to produce green hydrogen to be mixed with fracked gas to purportedly reduce emissions.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Caroline?
Thomas Murphy, Vice President, Power and Construction Group.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Thomas Murphy, and I work for the Power Construction Group based outside of Rochester, New York. We are a utility company that does both work for utility companies in both Rochester and Buffalo. I'm here today to tell you how the changes with the New York State legislation and the Climate Council will affect our company. Our company currently has a gas division that employs over 100 people. We're one company in the area with a 50% of our revenue coming from that. This is why we support the National Fuel proposal to continue to use natural gas and face things in overtime. PCG is not opposed to moving to, the state moving to green energy, but we want to be realistic on how it is achieved. The proposals put forth by New York State are not achievable due to many variables. The first is the build-out of the electrical infrastructure. The incredible cost and time it would take to complete all this work. To do all this work, new lines will be carried, the amount of power every home will require. That would mean digging up connections, every subdivision, commercial facilities, and underground, putting all new lines in before you can even disconnect the old power to make it safe for everybody. Another huge factor would be the workforce that nobody's talking about. The construction industry has over $5,000, $500,000 shortage in the, in the, in America right now. We need youth to come into this, but this is not an easy job. This is a job that takes highly skilled and highly trained people, and you have to look to the future to figure out how we're going to get these people in here. So the timelines are not there. We have an electrical division. We can do some of this work, but to get the people over there, we need to train them. We need time. So that is one of the major concerns for everybody here. As a resident of New York State all my life, we know that we have some of the highest costs in the country. This additional burn into every household between $20,000 and $50,000, the majority of New Yorkers cannot afford this, and, and how are they going to pay for it in a retrofit plus the cost of the infrastructure? I'm asking you how that you guys will be able to support everybody and not drive people out of New York State. I'm asking you to go back and work with us, go back and work with the industries, to come back up with a plan that'll work for everybody, that will not destroy jobs and families and drive people out of New York. Thank you.
Thank you. Sebastian?
Michael Boge, International Brotherhood of Boiler Makers.
Hello, and thank you. I am with the Boilermakers, and, and we help build and maintain the power plants to power America. I would like to talk about the Boilermaker work in New York State. As New York State's demand for power increases, New York State's willingness to produce it decreases. With the changes coming and the need for more power grows, we need a better plan. We didn't stop... We didn't stop using power in New York State, they just stopped producing it here. We now rely on other states and Canada to help power our needs, using the same style of plants that we shut down. We don't hear enough talk about clean carbon capture plants that are being used and proven clean in other states and Canada. We have Boilermakers all over New York State. They used to have great jobs right here at home with their families. Now they must travel away from their families and their home state to work on plants that help power our needs. We need to start talking about more reliable solutions such as hydrogen, clean carbon capture, carbon-free nuclear plants, to create the reliability and base power needed to power New York State and its large manufacturing base. Without a reliable baseload source, we cannot guarantee 24/7 power needed by manufacturers and residents throughout the state. And in doing this, we also create local jobs that bring our Boilermakers back home to work, as well as many other crafts. Thank you.
Thank you. Caroline?
Diane Surzak, Sierra Club member, Buffalo, New York. My name is Diane Surzak, and I speak as a member and volunteer of the Sierra Club, a homeowner in the city of Buffalo, and a new grandmother. I share the anxiety that the majority of Americans have for the future because of climate change. We must immediately act as aggressively as possible to slow climate change, and we cannot balance the future of the planet against short-term economic concerns. The time to go more slowly was 50 years ago, when the magnitude of the coming climate disaster became known. The fossil fuel industry lied and stalled, and now we are out of time. True renewable energy, geothermal energy, energy efficiency and conservation are doable and affordable now. The cost of transition can be subsidized in the interest of protecting the planet. We can start with the $850 million that we are planning to spend on a new Bills stadium. The scoping plan should be stronger on moving from natural gas and impose a clear moratorium on new fossil fuel plants and infrastructure, like pipelines. It should have clear deadlines for phasing out dirty energy and procuring renewables, a 2024 mandate for all-electric new building and construction, and a massive investment in getting existing homes off fossil fuels. An immediate end to cryptocurrency mining should be passed in the state. We cannot solve this problem and meet our mandate without stopping the expansion of fossil fuel infrastructure from pipelines to power plants. Thank you.
Thank you. Sebastian?
Zach Milas, Chairman of Government Affairs, Buffalo Building Owners and Managers Association,
BOMA is an apolitical, not-for-profit organization that represents the best interests of our local real estate industry. Our membership includes building owners and service providers that support over 53 million square feet in Greater Buffalo. BOMA supports the purpose of the CLCPA as it pertains to climate change and a cleaner, more sustainable planet. However, we have concerns regarding the feasibility of the timelines proposed, long-term power reliability, and the resulting increased costs of property ownership. We have great concerns about the timeline to electrification outlined in the plan. Given the extended useful life of building mechanical equipment and the lack of existing charging infrastructure to support additional electric vehicles, we believe it is an aggressive and unrealistic expectation for building owners to retrofit within the prescribed timelines. What measures or incentives will be in place to support these unfunded projects that are required by the mandates? Second, we question whether there will be a safe and reliable renewable infrastructure in place. Essentially, where is the renewable energy coming from? How soon will we have access to it? And how much will it cost? Given our challenging winters, many buildings rely on backup generators powered by natural gas to keep our properties and our communities' businesses running smoothly when electricity is not available. The plan calls for hundreds of square miles of solar farms and wind turbines, a hydrogen-grade pipeline, and so much more, but we ask, as the public invests massive amounts in renewable energy, how harmful will this reduction of utility options be to the consumer and who will control the costs? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Caroline, hang on for a second. Could I have Groups 11 and 12, please? 11 over here and 12 over here. Caroline?
Heather Ozarzak, Business Manager, IBW Local 2154.
Hi, my name is Heather Ozarzak. I'm the Business Manager for IBW Local 2154. I represent 700 union members working for the gas company across New York and Pennsylvania, operating and maintaining the pipeline. I won't tell you that I love the gas company. In fact, we have a strike vote deadline Friday for our Pennsylvania contract members working for the local gas company. But I will tell you, eliminating natural gas is a critical mistake. Natural gas is energy efficient, safe, reliable, and affordable. Western New York has severe winters. The grid is unreliable, as we continue to hear. When the power is out, we have gas generators to keep lights on and keep the heat on. Hospitals and other lifesaving businesses rely on natural gas, not only for heat and hot water, but for backup when electric is out. The natural gas system is maintained by our union members. I worked in the field for 15 years maintaining the pipelines. Outages are very uncommon, as opposed to what we experience with electric in our area, and it usually only lasts when the gas is out for a few hours. The grid cannot handle the load if natural gas is eliminated. It's dangerous to put the extra demand on the electric grid. When the system breaks from being pushed too hard and power is out, not having the security of natural gas is a position I don't want to be in. Winters are long. When there's no heat, pipes freeze, and people die in our extreme winters already. Eliminating natural gas is very risky and also puts many people out of work for something I believe hasn't been thoroughly thought through enough. We need to keep natural gas in New York. Thank you.
Thank you. Sebastian?
Edward Sunquist, Mayor, City of Jamestown.
Thank you to the members of the council for this opportunity to comment. My name is Eddie Sunquist, and I am commenting today on behalf of the City of Jamestown and the Jamestown Board of Public Utilities in my capacity as mayor and president. Jamestown owns and operates its own electric system and has an obligation to serve residential, commercial, and industrial customers in its territory. On behalf of the people of Jamestown, I leave you with four points. First, the City of Jamestown is concerned about the feasibility of addressing Climate Act goals without significant financial support from the state. The city's poverty rate is nearly 30%, which is over double the state average, and 55% of our housing stock was built before 1939. The cost of retrofitting these homes is astronomical when coupled with a population that does not have the means to do so. While we support the CLCPA goals, there must be significant financial assistance to help homeowners and municipal utilities in this effort. Second, workforce readiness, availability, and the real need for training and development are legitimate challenges that will become a roadblock if electrification transition is required in such a short time period. Third, climate objectives, programs, and incentives would prioritize economic development with respect to energy innovation, green energy product service supply chain development, and related workforce development for New York State-based businesses. We cannot attract these businesses without significant investment in our local electric distribution infrastructure. And fourth, migration of people and businesses should be closely monitored across state lines, especially in regions such as Jamestown that border other states that lack aggressive state mandates. Measures should be taken to limit migration as rising costs force businesses out, harm struggling communities, and prevent achieving broader climate goals. Thank you for this opportunity to comment.
Thank you. Caroline?
David Leathers, Jamestown BPU.
Thank you for the opportunity to provide input. My name is Dave Leathers, and I'm commenting today on behalf of the Jamestown Board of Public Utilities as General Manager. For the meeting this evening, we have three main items of priority and request they be considered and included in the final scoping plan. First, determine how to achieve these mandated goals while maximizing the economic development and market opportunities for current New York manufacturers, businesses, and workers. We recommend a priority be placed on opportunities for current local and regional businesses, industries, and manufacturers to be invited, involved, engaged, and included in the CAC planning process discussions immediately, providing them with both growth and development options. Second, include and provide assistance for the local distribution utilities to plan for and upgrade the neighborhood distribution circuits and system substations needed to support 100% electrification. The local electric distribution infrastructure in Jamestown and in most cities, towns, and villages are not ready to support an aggressive transition to electrification and to attract to those communities new clean technology manufacturers that require significant electric loads. And third, there needs to be better cost transparency. Affordability for our local community residents is a real challenge today, and more importantly, will be significantly impacted looking forward. Recent added costs due to the Clean Energy Standard and anticipated cost increases as the CLCPA is implemented are prohibitive for the majority of our community members. Higher electric bills, additional taxes and fees, required housing stock retrofits, upgrades, and electric service rebuilds, and higher vehicle procurement expenses are not manageable financially for our city residents. I ask you to truly consider defining affordability for our customers in the final scoping plan. Thank you.
Sebastian?
Catherine Marshall of Rochester, New York.
Thank you all for giving us all the opportunity to speak today. My name is Katie Marshall. I'm a graduate student at the University at Buffalo and a youth climate organizer with Sunrise Rochester. I commit myself to doing climate action work on top of my studies because I am profoundly worried for my future. In 2010, my family and I moved to Schmon County, New York, from Pensacola, Florida. Pensacola boasts some of the worst air pollution in the country, and we were hopeful that moving to rural New York would provide us a safer place to grow up. What we found instead was a town where water is extracted for fracking from our aquifer, radioactive drill cutting from fracking are dumped into our landfill, and hundreds of sand and chemical trucks go up and down our roads to the fracking fields of Pennsylvania. When I was in high school, a massive gas compressor station was built just miles from my house, and a whole neighborhood in my town lost their drinking water because of gas drilling. Year after year, my neighbors and my family have experienced flooding and costly damage to their homes from extreme weather events. I am proud to live in the state with the most aggressive and forward-thinking climate action plan in the country, but we are still waiting for the state to implement the CLCPA and to transition to proven renewable sources for heating and for power generation, as recommended in the scoping document. Fossil fuel interests are trying to stop this from happening, and I'm concerned that instead of protecting my future, Governor Hochul's administration will accept false solutions such as renewable natural gas and hydrogen. We must transition to green jobs with strong unions. We must ensure that the most vulnerable among us are the first to table for safe, decarbonized homes. For all New Yorkers to have a safe and equitable future, we must fund the CLCPA and treat it not as a suggestion, but as law. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Caroline?
Frank Holzman.
Hi there. I'm a 30-year resident of New York. I get my bachelor's degree pretty soon in business management and economics, and I've got a toolbox of experiences in the field like you've heard from a lot of these people today. You've heard hundreds of years' worth of experience from professionals in the field. I've read your drafting, your scoping plan. Ambitious. Yes, it is the actual definition of it, and it's hard to achieve. They have told you that it's more expensive. They have told you that it's not realistic, and each one of you needs to think about it and extend the deadline and research what these professionals have told you. Each one of you, have you had any of the experience that these gentlemen have had and have told you that it's not going to work? And you talk about the most vulnerable? You've already got a mass exodus to New York. We can't afford this. I can't afford this. To rejuvenate my house, to go to all gas, to do all these things that you're going to be aggressively, ambitiously imposing and enforcing upon people, you're going to drive us out. You've already driven us out with this new leadership, and it's going to make it even worse. We can't afford it. All these people here that are worried about climate change, they absolutely have a concern that needs to be addressed, but this is too fast, too much, too expensive, and it's going to hurt them more than it hurts the industry. The industry is going to survive. The people this is really going to hurt is the people that are wanting climate justice and that want climate, you know, control. I feel you, all of you. I've learned so much. I'm glad I was at the end of this because I've learned so much. I had something written down I was going to write. I couldn't do it because it was all said already. You've got to extend the deadline. You've got to reach out to these professionals because they've got more experience than you, and they're telling you, this ain't going to work.
Thank you. Sebastian?
Louis Staley of Buffalo, New York, retired.
Semi-retired. And what the mind can absorb is what the behind can endure, so I'm going to try to keep it inside two minutes. I've worked in the industry most of my life, from starting off with low-head hydro, and then coal, nuclear, combined cycle, landfill gas, and now solar. And I'm still working on solar, and so I know enough to be dangerous. Now, probably there's two aspects of the community action plan that I'd like to talk about. One is what this gentleman might mention, and that is the aggression in regard to the aggressiveness of the schedule. I think if you all take a hard look at it, and you have you or your experts look at it, it's going to be very difficult to achieve. And so I would ask you to really, really put a Gantt chart together, or get some of these experts here to put a Gantt chart together and really look at it closely. And again, I know that all of you have worked up there. I probably have worked with many of your colleagues. I'm just fortunate enough to have lived longer since I'm 81. Okay? The second thing is, you know, I look at the Community Protection Act. Well, you have to look at it from the standpoint of keeping New York State viable, a Community Protection Act, and that is keep it so that people stay here. We don't want to continue to lose 300,000 people like happened in 2021, and therefore, for example, my house, $600 to heat it. If I go all electric, it's $5,000. Let me tell you, people are going to be voting with their feet if that happens. So be careful, be very, very careful, be very thorough. I want and I agree with what you're trying to achieve, but you have to do it right. Don't be wrong, and don't embarrass yourself. Thank you.
Thank you. Caroline?
Marlena Rice, private citizen, Sierra Club.
I was born and raised in San Diego, California, and moved to Buffalo in 1975 and thought I'd died and gone to heaven. It was the most beautiful, wonderful city, and so I've been here for 47 years. I'm a Buffalonian. But growing up in California, driving along the freeways, you could not even see the foothills because of the smog. But then the federal and state laws demanded unleaded gas, and now I can stand in my son's apartment in Los Angeles and look out over the city, and I can see the mountains snow-capped. It's marvelous what we can do together. This was because people with integrity, forethought, wisdom, and courage changed and made laws that supported cleaner air, and that's what we need now, wisdom and courage. New Yorkers support climate action and the CLCPA with no compromises. We want to see a full and complete transition to clean the clean economy by 2050, at which time I'll be 102 years old. That's not that far away, with a zero emissions electric grid by 2040 and a clear, detailed roadmap toward a fully electrified transportation sector. The draft scoping plan must be stronger on gas. We need a clear moratorium on new fossil fuel plants and a massive investment in getting existing homes off fossil fuel. We need to look at what is happening now around us. According to an article in the Buffalo News by Caitlin Dewey this morning, there was a report that the United Nations produced, it was produced by 270 scientists from around the world, and that climate change is a real threat. We have to do something about it now, and I hope you have the courage and forethought and wisdom to adopt this plan. Thank you very much.
Sebastian?
Paul Elfstrom, Wheatfield Gardens CEO.
Good evening, and thank you for this opportunity to address the council. I'm here representing one of those rare issues that enjoys bipartisan support, cannabis legalization. As the Climate Council considers policies and its impact on industries, I want to ask you to add the impact of the recently legalized cannabis industry to the scoping plan. As one of the first cultivators licensed in New York, myself and the 25 employees at Wheatfield Gardens are thrilled, but I fear for the future of my industry as we try to compete with the black market that has no regard or no respect for climate action. black market that has no regard or no respect for climate action. Controlled environment agriculture and especially indoor cannabis cultivation is extremely energy intensive. If Albany wants the tax revenue, they better prepare for the energy demands that come with this industry. We simply don't have the grid generation capacity in New York State to support the millions of square feet of lights and HVAC that will be needed to meet the demand and electrify everything at the same time. Last year, 4% of all of the electricity produced in Colorado went towards the cannabis cultivation. The good news is that all plants including cannabis consume CO2 and turn it into oxygen. A well-designed natural gas microgrid with carbon capture can address the capacity and demand dilemma without adding significant greenhouse gas emissions. The use of a hydrogen-enhanced natural gas microgrid matched with a large-scale cannabis greenhouse can result in a net oxygen increase generated by the plants. This innovative hybrid approach provides the reliability and resiliency for critical industries like ours. Don't laugh. Cannabis cultivation dispensaries were considered essential during COVID.
Thank you. Caroline?
Bren Graham, Commissioner of the Housing Authority.
I know very little about this. And I represent the second-largest housing authority in New York State. We have thousands of apartments and thousands of Section 8 certificates. A lot of our properties were built in the early 1900s. So these buildings are very old. Some of the apartments, I mean downstairs, there's no heat. Upstairs, it's boiling. Heat is just going outside to the buildings. So we're in the process now of redeveloping four neighborhoods, neighborhoods. So we're going to spend hundreds of millions of dollars to redevelop certain neighborhoods. For example, the other day, we have a contractor that's doing remodeling of bathrooms and kitchens. They came back to us and said they need additional million dollars because of the asbestos in the building. So as we redevelop, we're finding out it's going to cost us astronomical dollar amounts to redevelop these properties. I don't know how we're going to go about doing it because I know very little about this and I'm learning. That's why I'm here. But we're going to have to develop these properties. We have 30 separate neighborhoods in the city of Buffalo. So how do we do that financially? And right now and again, people are living in, the systems are so old, we can't, we have to replace them. And if we replace them, we have to deal with the lead, the asbestos, the mold, all these things. So, oh, and one other thing, the residents, when we met with them, they want to have their own renewable energy sources put on the buildings because they're relying on heat and public money, you know, social service or whatever it is to pay their utilities. So.
Thank you for your comments. Sebastian?
Column Cross, Buffalo Transit Riders Union.
Yeah, so we've heard a lot about from the supply side, you know, gas versus electric, which is interesting to me because a little over 100 years ago, we had the exact same discussion, except it wasn't overheating, it was actually over lighting. So right a little over 100 years ago, the same pipes that power your stove and oven powered your lights. But look around, you know, 150 years ago, there was no power grid. We can adapt, we can overcome. It's been talked a lot that we can't ban natural gas because it's reliable and affordable. But we've banned reliable and affordable things before. Leaded gasoline was reliable and affordable, but we banned it because it was terrible for our health. Asbestos insulation was reliable and affordable, but we banned it because it was terrible for our health. CFCs and Freon, reliable and affordable, but terrible for the environment. But I want to talk a lot about the transportation aspect of this because I am with Buffalo Transit Riders United. And while I appreciate the phasing out of gasoline-powered cars, electric vehicles are not the answer. They're not the solution. While they don't produce emissions when you drive them around town, they still require all of the same infrastructure as regular cars. That infrastructure in general is bad for the climate, bad for the environment. Parking lots do not, they're impervious surfaces that reflect a lot of light. They create a lot of heat. Actually, sailplane people, people who fly engineless aircraft like giant parking lots because they can get a lot of lift, huge heat vectors. So we need to be thinking about rebuilding our infrastructure, rebuilding our cities, not to prioritize electric vehicles, electric cars, but to prioritize transit, walkable infrastructure, bicycles, things that don't generate, are, you know, carbon neutral or carbon negative, not, you know, big, bad, like car infrastructure. It's just bad for the environment generally. Thank you.
Thank you. Caroline?
Michelle Biella, supporter of Sierra Club and Citizens Climate Lobby Member.
Thank you, counsel. I wanted to say that I'm recent resident to East Aurora, New York after leaving here 42 years ago and growing up here. And so I spent professional years in the Midwest. I'm here with my husband. And we were trained up as citizens in Wisconsin for the last 20 years and more by people who cared deeply about the environment. They were citizens. They were professors, students of environmental education, and so on. And so over this period of time, we studied climate change and we studied sustainable communities. And Steve has with him a template for what Sweden did. It's called the Natural Step for Communities. And they were in economic difficulty and they turned some of their communities around by going to geothermal because they, each municipality owned its own grid. So that is where we come from. Now we live in this beautiful village where it seems like a lot of the neighbors could afford a solar system on their house. And we'd consider that and are reconsidering that after not doing it for many years. But at the same time, things need to be fair and equitable. And so when this plan is rolled out, it needs to consider everybody having a fair shake at getting affordable and as electric as possible systems in their home or some retrofits. In Wisconsin, they do the energy audit first. They make sure it's energy efficient and then you go from there. And unlike New York State, they don't any longer.
Thank you for your comments.
Yeah, they don't any longer have the rebates.
Ella Slamba of Buffalo, New York.
Hi. Thanks. Hi, my name is Ella Slamba. I'm a high school student, a born and raised Buffalonian, and a concerned New York citizen about our push for a change in the ongoing climate crisis. We have lived on this planet for thousands of years. We have only started making serious laws, acts, and changes to its inhabitants' awareness of climate change since the 1990s, a disgusting reality. This crisis, our crisis, has reached its limit and yet here I am talking to every person who came out to show up for our future. The Climate Leadership and Community Protection Act, or the CLCPA, was a law signed in 2019 as a structure to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, create a net zero emission, and expand a stable renewable energy usage. We are here today to gather our opinions and concerns about what our final scoping plan will look like at the end of 2022. We need to fund the CLCPA, if not for the pollution-free equitable economy, to create changes in Buffalo to our transportation system. So I can get to school on time, so we can have some reassurance when traveling to work, the stores, our homes. We need to recognize the CLCPA as a law because it is one. Our need and efforts for emission reduction and environmental justice need a law, not overlooked or undesired, but seen for making actual change and impacting us. The climate crisis is not something new or that will take away from us as citizens, but the lack of representation for our future is why we are taking time out of our day to testify for this hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. Caroline?
Jason Rupp, Northeast Hearth Products Association.
So my name is Jason Rupp. I've invested over 40 years of my life in the hearth industry as a retailer, a distributor, a chimney sweep, and a service provider all across the state of New York. Over the past 40 years, our hearth professionals and our retailers have helped hundreds of thousands of New Yorkers find affordable, practical, and reliable heating solutions. We have families visit our stores every single day searching for alternatives and backup systems to their electric and electrical-based heating systems. Why? Two main reasons. Electric has been the least reliable energy source available. Let Hurricane Sandy, Snow November, and the countless other ice storms and blizzards we've experienced over the last 20 years remind you of what it feels like to be left helpless in a New York winter without heat for hours, days, or even weeks. Number two, electric is the least affordable heat source we have today. We often have new homeowners and business owners visit our stores begging for an alternative. They're looking for an alternative after they've received that first heat bill and they realize they can't afford to live in that home without making changes. Our clients have no choice other than to purchase an alternative heat source to their electric system. These people simply can't afford to keep their businesses open or live in their homes. Although we offer several heating solutions and alternatives to gas appliances and electric appliances, our most sought-after appliances that we sell in New York are gas appliances. The biggest reasons, they work completely without electricity and they don't require batteries. They have modulating gas valves. They have modulating thermostats to conserve fuel. They're very affordable to operate. They're very efficient. They're perfect for young folks. They're perfect for elderly and even physically disabled. These products are safe, reliable, and practical solutions for all of our New Yorkers. Electricity has proven time and time again to be unreliable and unaffordable. Banning the use of gas in New York puts New Yorkers in harm's way, limits their ability to protect themselves, their homes, and their families. Banning natural gas forces New Yorkers to find a new place to live and likely never return. We need reasons to keep people in New York rather than ask them to leave.
Thank you for your comments. Sebastian?
John Joyce, board member of Citizens Against Wind Turbines in Lake Erie.
Good evening, one and all. In the words of our late mayor Jimmy Griffin, the only thing we have to drink is beer itself. But to go to the point here, 224 years ago, the poisonous idea that undergirds this whole hearing was unleashed by Thomas Malthus, an economist from London, who opined that looking at a world with a billion citizens and looking at Great Britain, he saw that there was not enough resource to sustain this number of people. And he wrote an essay on overpopulation. That essay has morphed into a cause for the elite thinkers, the intellectuals of the world, who have set up a dynamic whereby the knowing are pitting themselves against the unknowing. One of the side effects of his thinking was, well, if there's not enough to go around, how do we decide who will benefit by what's left? Well, it can't be the unfit. So who are the unfit? Well, they're the poor. And their thinking, the poor turned out to be people who were pygmies or who were dark-skinned or who came from different cultures. Over the time since that's happened, tens of millions of peoples have died. And one of the side effects was a book by Rachel Carson you may have heard of. She's the grandmother of climate and environmentalism. In that book, she condemned and vilified the DDT, false. It was a lie. And tens of million people have died from that. The bottom line is, if you wish to look at something practical, the IPCC, the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change, made a statement in 2018 that said this, "The climate is a nonlinear chaotic system of which the future cannot be predicted." If you wish to go and look for what's happened in the past, extinctionclock.org has catalogued every terrible prediction that's been made by notable people. For example...
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Sebastian, we're going to keep going with your row.
Sounds good.
Craig Kincaid, Williamsville, New York.
Thank you. Sorry it's hard to get here after work. I think we should build more wind and solar and transmission lines. I know there's been a lot of discussion here about the cost of electricity or the cost of this new infrastructure. But you have to remember, I've lived in Bultanawanda in Williamsville. When we go for walks, we can oftentimes smell gas coming up from the ground. A lot of those pipes are from the 50s, 60s. There will be a cost for replacing those pipes. I had a home energy audit just about a week ago. And what I was surprised to find is that I have, when in my flue gas, it's nine times more carbon monoxide than the allowable limit. That's a danger to myself and my family. With houses with natural gas heating, you have to have carbon monoxide detectors. There's a danger to me and my children with that. I feel we should build more electric, I'm sorry, more solar and wind and transmission lines. And the reason, an additional reason is because many of these people have discussed how much we need natural gas. And currently, we do. Currently, when we heat our homes, somebody said over 90% of the heat is from natural gas. And when you look at the New York ISO real time for like what the electricity is made of right now, oftentimes over 50% is natural gas. We have a tremendous reliance on natural gas and there's a danger to that. As more and more of these liquefied natural gas export systems are made and shipped gas to Europe and Asia where they're charging 10 times more, 20 times more than what we are for gas, it's going to raise our costs. It'd be good for our industries that we're doing this, but it's going to cost us.
Thank you for your comment. Sebastian, let's go forward.
Angel Rosado, Citizen Action New York Lead Organizer of West New York.
So the reality is we need to dispense the pleasantries because we don't have time for those. The reality is we have ignored climate change and our impact on the environment since the beginning of the industrial revolution. And we cannot put a cost on the environment. We cannot put a cost on our future. We cannot put a cost on the air we breathe and the water we drink. Many people who oppose renewables are because they work in the environment of nonrenewables and they do that out of self-preservation because they don't know what's going to happen to their job and their way to make a living if we move towards renewable energy. That responsibility to remedy that problem falls on our government, which should be working in the best interest of society as a whole. Now, where that problem comes in at is that we need the political will of our governmental system to value the water we drink, the air we breathe, and the people instead of corporate interest and profits and money. The reality is backdoor deals and bribes run the government and run the decisions we make as a country and has for generations. And we talk about how expensive things are going to be. If it is expensive, tax the wealthiest people, tax the wealthiest corporations, and do what the right thing is so that the regular people can actually have some of that cost alleviated because we're the ones that need the welfare and the help, not the rich. And the reality is if we don't do that, there will not be air to breathe, there will not be clean water to drink, and there will be multiple people who move to a climate refuge like Buffalo, New York, looking for a place to live. And what happens to the poor people, which are specifically low-income and people of color in Buffalo when people come here looking for somewhere to live that have more money than us? We will not live here anymore because we will be pushed out and gentrified. This all comes down to political will and the stoppage of being nice to each other because we think respectability politics and we think this Eurocentric, white supremacist idea of professionalism matters more than the environment and the people that we all are. And we need to stop being nice about it and we need to be very bleak and real about what our future looks like. And this is why the goal is 2050, but this is why it is also ambitious.
Thank you for your comments.
Because we have to do this today, not tomorrow.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you for your comments.
Valerie Juong, Western New York Youth Climate Council.
Good evening, everyone. I am representing the Western New York Youth Climate Council, a youth-led organization for climate justice. I was speaking with a friend of mine about climate issues and the challenges facing our youth. She told me that growing up, she and her other friends on the east side would play in the neighborhood's vacant lots, many of which are brownfields full of toxic and carcinogenic pollutants. On the west side near the Peace Bridge, community members suffer from asthma at three times the national rate. This is due to the increased pollutants from fossil fuel-based transportation. Our communities are still suffering from past industrial pollution and current emissions from fossil fuel-based transportation. And combustion-based false solutions such as waste incineration will only exacerbate illness in our communities by releasing more pollutants into the air. Seven of New York State's waste combustion sites rank among the top 12 most polluting facilities across the nation in one or more pollutants. In order for the CLCPA to truly be the people's bill, we must engage scenario three in the CLCPA scoping plan and electrify our infrastructure across sectors as well as create social support systems not only in systems not only in dealing out the credits for the programs outlined in the CLCPA scoping plan, but also in training labor that is currently housed within the fossil fuel industry and transitioning them over to good, green, high-paying jobs. This is necessary to protect our climate and community as the CLCPA intended. Thank you.
Thank you. Sebastian, the last word of the night, please.
Oh, and it's a name.
Yes.
How do I pronounce this?
Penchasaden.
Okay. Nicholas Penchasaden, our City Action Buffalo.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak to you. I'm here as a private citizen, as a father, and, and as a member of our community and as our species. I, I think climate change, it's been a long time coming. You know, we, I don't think that we have time to debate about it anymore. And, and it is the time for action, and it is the time for bold action. And I do appreciate the CLCPA. But on behalf of, of my children and their future, I implore you to, to act to ensure our survival in this planet. The planet will outlive us. You know, we are beyond the point where, you know, now we're talking about mitigation and not about averting change. Change is coming. We need to do anything we can do to avert it right now. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So I want to thank everyone for coming tonight and for listening to each other. And I also want to thank the facility for the support that they gave us in setting up this hearing. The hearing's now closed. Have a good night.